Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. And as you can see, we have a new flag up here, so we will say the Pledge of Allegiance to this flag.
This way.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Ms. Antellus.
Here.
Ms. Arminio.
Here.
Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Here.
Mr. Northstein.
Here.
Mr. Poit. Mr. Presiosso. Mr. Zarneski.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted, March 7, 2014, one at all schools, two Home News Tribune, three Cranberry Press, and four filed with the Clerk of the Municipality. At this time, we will have our reports from our student board member.
Good evening, everyone. So, we have a lot of good news tonight. The Monroe Township High School DECA chapter has recently returned from the state competition and had its most successful year in school history. Sixteen students qualified for the International Career Development Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, and are excited to compete this May. This number is double of last year's students that qualified. Two students were elected into state office positions, and the Monroe Township High School DECA advisor, Ms. Debbie Stupensky, received recognition as an honorary life member of New Jersey DECA. Mr. Monroe recently took place at the high school. Six senior guys volunteered to participate as contestants in a male beauty pageant. The winner received the title of Mr. Monroe, and he also received a free prom bid for himself and his plus-one, and the night was just a great way to show school spirit and support of fellow classmates. The MTHS National Honor Society is holding a book drive for the next two weeks. Used and new books are accepted of all reading levels, and all collected materials are being donated to Goodwill. The spring sports season has officially begun, and we would like to congratulate all winter athletes on their accomplishments and wish all spring athletes the best of luck. Apple Garth Elementary School hosted its second annual Jump Rope for the Heart on February 11th, raising a total of $9,000, which is more than double of last year's total, and all money will benefit the American Heart Association. Oak Tree School also participated in Jump Rope for the Heart, and they raised over $12,000 and are honored to also present this money to the American Heart Association, and Oak Tree placed fourth in the county for fundraising in this event. Apple Garth, Barkley Brook, and Oak Tree Schools all began their participation in the Middle Socks County Spring Food Drive today. All students and staff are encouraged to donate. Oak Tree School raised $1,947 through their Pennies for Patients fundraiser. All profits are being donated to the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Also at Oak Tree, Read Across America was celebrated the week of March 3 through March 7, with bulletin boards decorated in tribute to Dr. Seuss. Guest readers included Rutgers athletes that read in each classroom, and a week-long of Spirit Week and fun activities took place. A reading train involving all staff and students filled the halls on March 7. The annual PTA Variety Show will take place on Friday, March 21st. Come out and witness the talented students of our district. And lastly, many of you received this flyer tonight, but to call your attention to it, the Monroe Township Education Foundation is presenting a Monroe Township School Staff vs. Township Police Basketball Game fundraiser for Mikey Nichols. The game is Tuesday, April 22 at 7:00 PM in the high school. The donation and entrance fee is only $5, and it includes a night of food, raffles, the game, and fun, all in support effort of Mikey on his road to recovery. So I encourage everyone to please come out for the night and show your support, and contact info and website information can be found at the bottom of the page. Thank you.
Thank you for that very comprehensive report tonight. At this time, we will go to number six on the agenda, the presentation and adoption of the preliminary 2014-2015 school budget, and I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Hamilton and Mr. Gorski for their presentation.
Good evening. We will do our presentation by way of PowerPoint. Well firstly, when in the process of presenting our budget presentate preliminary budget presentation this evening, we certainly want to thank our board members for all their support, time, and effort that went into developing this budget, and a special thanks to our finance committee, which is chaired by Mr. Presiosso, co-chaired by Lou Kaufman, and members include Amy Antellus, Kathy Koloponowicz, of course, Tom Norstein, and alternate member, Mr. Marvin Braverman. So, special thank you to these folks for their time and effort as well that went into developing this budget. Everything that we put into the budget is centered around two basic principles. One is our vision statement, which is Monroe Township Board of Education commits itself to all children by preparing them to reach their full potential and to function in a global society through a preeminent education, and this has been our mission, our vision statement for almost five years now. And our mission statement follows the Monroe Public Schools in collaboration with the members of the community, so ensure that all children receive an exemplary education by well-trained, committed staff in a safe and orderly environment. Our board goals for this year, which again have been pivotal in helping us develop this budget, the board adopted these three goals this year, well, this school year, in August, and those goals are to adopt a strategic plan and implement the goals articulated in the plan throughout the course of this school year, review and evaluate and assess current programs and structures, specifically by identifying and developing a schedule for review for the coming year, which is the year we're in. The focus will be on extra and co-curricular programs and activities, and to develop a budget philosophy, parameters, and the framework for the development of the budget that we are presenting to you this evening. The executive summary for this budget in the following slides. Ultimately, this budget has specific parameters and a framework which have been developed in conjunction with the board's philosophy directive, and this was a result of work over the summer where the board gave the administration very specific parameters that they wanted to include in the budget, and the budget has been developed around those parameters, which essentially becomes our board philosophy, our budget philosophy. It is, it has been professionally constructed to afford every student an opportunity for exemplary education by well-trained staff, getting back to our mission statement. It offers diverse course offerings, extra and co-curricular activities, and it tends, it lends to, leads to encourage students to develop a sense of identity and purpose. The district is committed to ensure that its staff is proposed to increase the strategic plan, including guidance and an additional child study team. Part of why we want to do this is because we are seeing more and more of our youngsters coming to school with very special needs, and there are cadre of youngsters who need supports outside of the special education arena, so we want to provide specialized staff who can provide those services in that regard. We're also looking very carefully at how to address our facilities and transportation needs. This proposal has an additional roof replacement, as well as four new buses and five new vans. We believe that our proposed budget continues to become more effective and efficient, as evidenced by the successful county budget review process, which is very arduous. So even after we go, and we're going to talk about that later on, but even after we go through our budget review process here in the district, we then have to go to the state or the county office, which is a representative of the State Department of Education, and we have a very comprehensive review where we have to re-justify, if you will, everything that goes into that budget and talk about our plans for reducing adequacy, et cetera. Finally, it all comes together in great sensitivity to the taxpayers. While our state aid numbers remain unsatisfactory, our combination of efficient spending, application of bond surplus against the tax levy, we're very pleased to present tonight a budget that will show a tax decrease to the local taxpayer. This is significant, given the number of students that are continuing to enroll in our district, the number of state mandates that are continue to, that we continue to have to budget for, in addition to those, some of those facilities needs that we have had to make a part of our regular operating budget, we are presenting a budget tonight that represents a tax decrease. And Mike will give you more information about that when he, when we get to the dollar and cents, but ultimately, almost four years ago, we talked about how we would align ourselves by use of the bond money and the anticipation that ratables would begin to reverse themselves to create what is, what we call the ideal storm, if you will, so we're at a point where we're able to present a budget with a tax decrease. So this is the budget overview. It represents the district priorities, quality educational services, long-range vision for our facilities, fiscal responsibility, a steady increase in our enrollment, and even when we get to the slide that speaks to pupil projections for student enrollment, we have a little arbitrary number that's, that's put in there that's derived by the anticipated number of students we, we look forward to having as a result of the new construction going on in our district, capital improvement projects, and of course, our continued need for professional development. Now, there are some significant cap limitations. Again, the student enrollment presents a challenge for us in developing a budget, creating a budget that has an unknown almost number of students that we need to plan for, the impact on this budget on the community in terms of what transportation looks like, the delivery of services, and develop, and making sure we're developing a budget that looks at the needs of all of our students, those who at the low end of the continuum, who have the support of an IEP or a 504, those who are at the other end of the continuum, those, those high flyers who need enrichment opportunities, as well as those many, many students, the vast majority that are right there in the middle, who kind of stay off the radar, and we have a responsibility to make sure we're serving those youngsters as well, and looking certainly at the quality of services in district history. So these are our projected enrollments. Now, we are looking at an increase roughly of 128 students. This is very modest. This is making, having a contingency plan for construction that will impact Brookside, Apple Garth, and of course, Oak Tree Schools. And we are seeing a shift in some of our numbers. You'll see the high school and middle school impacted more significantly than, than the other elementary school students, but we are anticipating that we will have approximately 20, almost 2,300, 6,300 students in our school district next year. So now, this is what goes into our budget creation timeline, the process, which we actually started early this year because we were anticipating that we would have some significant challenges. So we start in August, looking at, working with the board to come up with the budget philosophy, and then we look at some historical enrollment patterns. Of course, this is complicated this year because we have some construction going on in our community, and we don't really know, while we know how many units will be going up, we don't know how many youngsters those units will produce. So we're kind of operating blindly here, but making some educated guess in terms of what our enrollment will be, and, and we've been pretty good with, with being able to be close to on target with that. And after we establish those enrollment patterns, we have to look very closely at what our staffing needs are. Obviously, the more students you have, the more staff you need, and as we expand our programs and or reduce services, we have to think about the impact that that has on our staff. The OEE process, which is orchestrating effective effort, is again a process that we utilize to make certain that every budget item relates to our overall goals and our mission statement. So if there is a recommendation that comes from one of our principals or director or department heads, our responsibility as central administration is to go back and make sure that that particular expenditure is related somewhere to what we have deemed to be our priority or what's important to our district, and that's what OEE helps us to do. Then our principals, directors, and department heads go through budget defense rounds. I think with one exception, every budget had at least two revisions, and there were some revisions that were made even after the budget defense rounds, but that process began this year as early as November. Then we anticipate the governor's budget address, and although he doesn't give numbers during that address, he kind of alludes to what we can anticipate in terms of what those state aid numbers will look like. He'll generally start talking about, "Well, I'm going to increase dollars to public education," and that lets us know what will at least be kept whole from the preceding year. Of course, there are times that there's been significant reductions, and we've had to address, address those concerns accordingly. Following the governor's address, the following day, we get the allocation of state aid. That tells us what the state is. They strategically reduced that number around 4 o'clock, so you can't call them and ask them what's going on. And then there's the adoption, this is, which is where we are this evening, of our tentative budget, and then finally, the public hearing. After the public hearing, the budget gets sent to the state, and it is approved at that point.
Good evening, everyone. I want to give you a quick overview of some major programs that are in this budget, basically addressing curriculum, instruction, and assessment, basically what we want our kids to know, understand, and be able to do, and then how do we provide the services and the resources to do that. So amongst a vast variety of different resources that we have in the district, this budget includes the implementation of the Common Core Curriculum State Standards, which is in, it's year four of implementation, and has been a vertical process that is, that we've endeavored with our teachers, and we're starting to learn really the, the ins and outs of meeting the needs of all those standards. Preparation for the park assessments, which is right in line to measure our knowledge and our understanding of the, of the CCSS. Our athletic and co-curricular programs are after-school programs. Our anti-bullying and HIB, harassment, intimidation, and bullying supports for all of our students. Our AP courses, our professional development to teach those courses, and our testing processes in the district, our arts at the middle school and the high school, our AVID program for our grade seven to 12 students, our basic skills instruction program, our non-teaching evaluation tool and professional development. So this year was year one in implementation for the teacher and principal tool. Next year, we are also looking at nurses, guidance, and other groups that did not umbrella under that first wave of teacher reform and evaluation within the state and, and at the federal level. Our high scope preschool curriculum and resources, our continuation of literacy throughout the district, our continuation of our mathematics program, and our developmental reading assessments that is, the DRAs are commonly referred to where your, where our children are reading, how they're progressing, so we could understand that and then meet them where they are academically. Additionally, we have other formative assessments, which inform our instruction, our school garden program at the high school, our senior option program, our student awards, student council, teen pep, our safety training for all of our staff, our transition programs to the, to the high school from the middle school, our Wilson Pre-Reading Program, our decoding program, our curriculum writing process, our talented and gifted curriculum writing process, our adult education process. In addition, our ELL program, extended year summer program, our iPad lease, this is year three of that lease program, the high school academy programs, the integrated preschool programs, our assistive technology for our special needs students, our parent training and partnerships, our preschool screening, our testing, again, our process, and our professional development, and our response to intervention program, which we're starting to see a real nice response to our interventions. Additionally, we want to maintain our current science and social studies programs, maintain our arts programs, support other existing laptops and technologies in the district with the onset of the park assessments coming down, and our new world language program, which we're going to implement this year as well. And I know there are others, there is a multitude of other programs, but we wanted to give you a flavor for the academic concepts of this budget. Mike?
Thanks. Good evening. I'd like to begin talking about some key facts on Monroe's state aid. Again, there's two types of state aid. The first and larger of the two types is the equalization aid. Equalization aid is monies that are designed to help a district support its adequacy budget. It's distributed by property wealth and income levels. Monroe unfortunately, again, was awarded $0 in this category because the state considers us to be an affluent district in terms of property ratables and also high income levels, which come off the aggregate New Jersey 1040 filings. There's a code, a four-digit code on your New Jersey 1040. They compile all that information, and they, they assess that we're doing well here from an income standpoint. Now, I don't know about you, Dr. Hamilton and I have been talking and arguing with the state about this for a while. You drive through Monroe, you don't get the essence here in Beverly Hills. For South Brunswick, who is a similar district to us, to receive $17 million a year, where we get a little over three, there's not a gradual distribution of this aid, and somehow we fall off the cliff each year and get zero. The second type is categorical aid. This is a type of state aid that's awarded on the number of students who qualify for each individual aid category. Monroe qualifies for a few, special education, transportation aid. We have the most efficient transportation office in the state, and that this aid type was designed to encourage districts to be more efficient and then be rewarded with aid. But due to our over adequacy status, this is phased out, and we only get a fraction of what this award should be, and the rest is deferred over a five-year period. Once again, our state aid is 3.26% of our total revenues to support the school budget. It's one of the lowest in the state aid per pupil ratios in the county. I encourage everybody to look at our website to find out what we're doing about it. In district, we drafted our own legislation to get additional state aid. It's called S2307, and I'm pleased to say that according to Jim Hooker, who's the chief of staff for Senator Greenstein, Senator Greenstein did reintroduce the bill as a priority in the new assembly, which began the same day the old one expired, January 14. Also, Assemblyman Wayne D'Angelo and Dan Benson, Senator Greenstein's legislative district mates, here on the 14th, introduced their assembly version the same day. The new senate version of the bill is S272, and the assembly version is A1500. These bills are still very much alive, and we're going to continue to put the pressure on to get some success out of this very labor-intensive endeavor. The next slide takes us to sources of revenue, and I encourage everybody to turn to handout A, where I'll briefly go over the line item categories. The first, this schedule represents everything that makes up the revenues in this district, where we get our money from. The first category is fund balance, and in layman's terms, this is just money that was left over from two budgets ago, where we didn't spend everything that we were budgeted, and you're, or you could have recognized additional revenue sources over what you had budgeted, and then the aggregate is carried over two years later, which is now 1415. The general fund debt service, I'm sorry, the general fund aid increased 865,000 compared to the prior year. The prior years was reduced because we rehabbed Apple Garth School within the budget, and we continue to do projects like roof replacements, all within the budget cap, living with our own resources, instead of going out for much more expensive bond financing. The debt service fund generated $155,341 of surplus, which is a result of our refunding of all the open bond series for the high school. Generally, the debt service fund does not generate much surplus at all, but fortunately, this year it did. As per the board's philosophy directive, we are transferring $2.5 million from bond surplus to offset what otherwise would be raised through the debt service levy. That's a revenue source for this budget. Separately, you'll see local taxes. Taxes are raised in two different funds. The general fund, which everybody's more familiar with, provides for teacher salaries, benefits, and so on, and the debt service fund, which you voted on previously in other referendums, and that's the required payments for principal and interest. The general fund amount is within the cap, and in fact, the board did not spend until the full cap, where $230,000 approximately under where we could have budgeted to. And other revenue consists of various categories, including most notably tuition from Jamesburg, and Jamesburg tuition rate for the high school is calculated by the DOE software, and every year since we opened the school, that tuition rate has been decreasing because costs are pretty much fixed within the cap, while our enrollment is increasing. The current tuition rate is $14,291, and the total number of students estimated, which corresponds to Jamesburg's ASSA, Application for State School Aid, is 267. That forms the base tuition number on top. Then you'll notice transportation fees. We, we share joint chairs with Jamesburg, and we provide transportation services on our buses for a fee of $238,655. Then you'll see a line for prior year tuition adjustment. This reflects a settlement between the two districts, between budgeted and actual costs and budgeted and actual ADE each year. When we put together the budget, we don't know our actual tuition costs, nor do we know how many students are actually going to come from Jamesburg. That's all calculated at the conclusion of the year, and then we settle up, and with the interest allocation included in this calculation, Jamesburg owes Monroe $333,898, which by statute is to be included in the 1415 budget. The prior year, which is the 1314 school year that we're in now, the obligation is So if these revenue sources are not recognized by the conclusion of the 1415 budget, the tuition from Jamesburg to Monroe in a rearrage will be approaching $1 million. This is to be determined through litigation result. The next category is state aid, and again, this is what's supposed to fund a public education, as we've heard before. At 3.26% of revenues, this really is doing an inept job in that category. The state has provided some new categories, and we're receiving actually about $170,000 net additional aid compared to last year. Some of it is for park readiness. Dr. Gorman spoke about that before, and unfortunately, it's, park is another mandated program from the state that probably we're spending five times the amount of state aid that we're receiving, and a lot of districts are struggling even to be able to afford it at all. And finally, federal government aid, less than 1%, and that's what makes up the total revenues. The next page, which is handout B, shows state aid history here in Monroe. You don't see any equalization aid category because we haven't received any since probably 15 years or so. But this shows categorical aid categories, and what's troublesome about this chart is if you take your aid from 2009, 2010 in total, and you compare it to 2014, 2015 total, 1415 is 60% of the aid award that we received in 910, even though we have an additional 800 students. That's like budgeting for an additional school's worth of students and getting 60% of the aid you received back then. The next chart shows a little detail on our miscellaneous revenue category. BASK agreement, we have a use of building lease with BASK, where they pay us $100,000 a year, and we collect about $25,000 of other fees from different users. Solar credits, the Apple Garth School has solar panels that helps generate some of the electricity in the school, and when we have surplus, we sell them back. Unfortunately, the federal government is not, not subsidizing these solar credits, so the amount we get back now is a fraction of what it was a few years ago. Adult education revenues, transportation joint chairs, our transportation director aggressively solicits all the other districts in the neighborhoods and asks them if they have any routes running through our township, or if we can share and, and save money on those, and we do quite a few. save money on those, and we do quite a few. Preschool integrated program tuition, interest income, admission from sports, Oprah fees, recycling rebates, miscellaneous grants. That's the total miscellaneous pie chart. Where does the money go? This is a great visual aid in determining that. Instruction, special ed, related services for IEP students, fifty-one-point-one-three percent, but it's actually greater than that because if you allocate the benefits chart pie to the left, which is directly related to a lot of the instruction, we spend, you know, a lion's share of the budget on instruction. Athletics, co-curricular, one-point-four percent. Debt service, nine-point-two-six percent. Administration, two-point-eight-three. Capital projects, grants, transportation and other. You could also argue that transportation is directly related to students and instruction. But there you go, that's where the money goes. The next chart shows the reduction in over adequacy spending that the district has been achieving over the last few years. In 1112, we were thirteen-point-seven-million dollars over adequacy. Now briefly, what is adequacy? Adequacy is a hypothetical model that a think tank of individuals came up with for the state that tries to determine what an average school should cost, how many average special ed students are in each school, and comes up with a rate per pupil. Then they multiply that rate per pupil by a projected enrollment trend that the state calculates and then they come up with your adequacy budget. They compare that to your local fair share, which is what the state expects you to be able to raise due to your property wealth and income levels, and that difference is your over adequacy. Thirteen-point-six we were over in 1112. That dropped to seven-point-nine in 1213. That dropped to six-point-nine in 12, in 1314. And it would have continued to drop, probably below six-million dollars, had it not been for a crafty maneuver by the state this year, which I picked up on when I noticed that the number actually grew to ten-million dollars. So I determined that last year's adequacy budget, which again is a rate based upon the projected number of students you have in your district, was frozen and carried over to 14-15. So we're not getting any credit for the two-hundred new students that we're receiving here. Hence, we're more over adequacy according to the state's calculation than last year and more precariously, I said before, your over adequacy status reduces your categorical state aid. So by freezing our adequacy budget to last year, comparing it to this year's local fair share, it reduces our state aid and presents very poorly to the public, an illustration that does not reflect the spending curtailment that we've had here in the district multiplied by the number of new students. Dr. Hamilton and I addressed this with the county, they're bringing it up with the state. They said no other districts have identified this before, you're the first one. So we'll see if anything becomes of that. Administrative costs, this is another popular, a popular topic that everybody likes to compare. I'm not going to talk about this too much because the chart says it all. Administrative spending is flat, it's only been increased because of legal expenses related to the Jamesburg lawsuit and also heavy special education cases. While the light purple chart continues to increase, we're not spending anywhere near what we could in administrative categories, that's for sure. The next chart is mandates and student enrollment impact. These are new programs, many of which correspond with the board's philosophy this year, and I'll outline them quickly. Out-of-district tuition is projected to increase forty-nine-thousand-eight-fifty-one. Private schools are raising their tuition rates, we have no control over that. Marietta and our special education department has done a wonderful job to try to meet students' needs here in district and bring kids back as opposed to sending them out in a much more expensive environment while still providing a better or equal service. Increase in charter school tuition. Monroe now has five students attending charter schools. Charter schools are viewed equal to public schools by the state and when students elect to go there, revenues follow the student. And we're now paying over fifty-thousand dollars a year to charter schools. Aggregate salary increases. The board had in the philosophy development come up with a two-percent salary for salaries. Now that's not to say it won't be offset by future labor agreements that are still being disclosed, we'll talk more about that later. Net employee health benefit increases. Last year, health insurance was projected to go up three-point-six-million dollars. That's more than we can grow our entire budget last year. We have a new broker, we've gone back to Horizon and we switched the type of insurance that we have from a direct claims method to a prospective method, which the insurance risk lies more with the carrier. Plus, we went back and we stood on our head and said, "We're going to leave and not pay another nickel and we're going to go with some competitive carriers if you don't reduce this." And only threatening to leave did Horizon reduce our rates by another seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I only say that to impress upon you the great deal of negotiating and haggling that goes into the reduction of those health insurance rates. Plus, staff is contributing more than ever now in tier four towards health insurance. PERS pension contribution, the state continues to push pension obligations on the local districts, not only with DCRP, but with people in PERS, Public Employer Retirement System. Dr. Hamilton mentioned in the budget is a new guidance counselor at the middle school and a new child study team. We believe that these areas of fortification of staff directly leads to safeguarding students better than metal detectors or anything else. Lot of the instances you've seen in the news lately have been children who could have been identified through these procedures and that could have avoided a lot of the trouble that ensued. Teaching staff sections, we're increasing some sections and adding some new staff where only it's absolutely essential. We're outfitting two new classrooms at the middle school. New textbook adoption, that's been cut down dramatically from when it was first proposed. Trailer lease extension. Partial roof replacement at the Monroe Township Middle School, that's the instructional wing, that's about twenty-something years beyond its warranted life. And carpet VAT removal at Barclay Brook, four new buses and five new vans. That's in expenditure, but it's actually going to be a savings because it allows us to use our existing staff without hiring new staff and bring routes back from the Middlesex Regional Ed Service Commission. New maintenance vehicle, we have a salt-spreading truck that you could stick your head through in the back because it's so badly rusted, it doesn't support the salt-spreader anymore. And a new scoreboard and sound system and new computers and related equipment. Appropriations detail, that is chart C. And what I want you to notice from chart C, as an accountant, when you prepare financial statements, one of the most useful techniques is to put a percentage on the numbers because it's much more useful to read. And if you look at the far right column, no matter what page you're on, no matter what category, you're going to see decreases. This budget has been raked through from the initial principal defense rounds through the very difficult cap where Dr. Hamilton and I, when we put together the lean budgets to begin with, were two-point-four-million dollars over cap and we had to really go back and eliminate programs and services, including some existing salaries that are, and positions that are in the district. The district engages in many shared services. Shared service with the township for the telecom TV studio. Joint shares, as I mentioned before, with transportation. We're in a purchasing consortium that saved over three-quarters of a million dollars as opposed to buying under bid. And we have an inter-local agreement where Nancy Mitresak, our fine food service director, shares lunches with the Middlesex Regional Ed Service Commission Academy Learning Center. Also in here, you'll notice salaries, teacher salaries throughout, budgeted at two percent. And I want to remind you that last year's MTEA contract had a zero increase effect on the budget because of concessions, mainly in health. Additionally, many, in fact, all of the members in that group are bringing back less in terms of a net check than they were four years ago because of mandatory contributions for health insurance, because of mandatory increases in pension and very lean salary increases. And finally, let's talk about the tax rate. What influences the tax rate? Well, number one, state aid. It's a state's obligation to fund a free and appropriate education. So in most districts, state aid is the biggest revenue source, but again, here, three percent. Fund balance applied. We talked about that before, by not spending to your full budget, the intent is to carry it over two years later, so you don't have to raise taxes as much, you use it instead. Ratables. Let's take a few minutes and talk about ratables because this is an important topic this year. The township last year had value, valued, evaluated ratables at fifty-four percent of market value. So if you had a house that's market value was about three-hundred-thousand, your assessed value that you paid taxes on was about a hundred-and-fifty. There's pressure from the county and the state that's put on municipalities after it gets that low to reevaluate the properties. And that's what Mayor Pucci and the township did this year, to go through every property in town and reevaluate to a hundred percent. The average residential unit will pay less because of a shift in redistribution of wealth assessment within the community. That's per the township. And there was also an intentional shift from residential to commercial properties. So that again helps the homeowners with this reevaluation. According to the township, the average residential taxes last year were seventy-two-hundred-and-two dollars. The average residential taxes this year are sixty-nine-hundred dollars, so they're down a little bit, about fifteen dollars. And finally, how does that affect us here in Monroe? This chart says it all. For the last few, four years, through the direction of the board president and the board of education and our superintendent and myself, we have constructed budgets with an urgency to bring down taxes. We have applied bond surplus through an installment basis, as Dr. Hamilton mentioned before, and these are the average tax increases for the last three years. Three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars, a hundred-and-forty-five dollars, forty-two dollars. And this year, for the first time in seventeen years, we have a tax decrease. And we're very proud of that and it's a welcome relief for the community, I'm sure. Now, individual results will vary and it's important for everybody to understand that. If you're a homeowner in the community and you've lived here for twenty years, it's fair to say you may have been under-assessed for that long a period of time and now your reevaluation's going to take you to a hundred percent market value, you're going to feel an increase. But on average, the average taxpayer is going to have a reduction in school taxes of a hundred-and-fourteen dollars and that's at a home assessed at a little over three-hundred-thousand And I just wanted to thank, of course, the board of education and Dr. Hamilton, Mayor Pucci, Mitchell Elias, Wayne Hamilton and George Lang from the township because this ratable situation this year required all of our collaboration and they were very generous with their time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of the staff members, particularly the administrators, and of course, Mike Gorsky for his incredible work with pulling all of this together. This process started again back in October. It included nights and weekends and Mike and I getting together when school was not in session and gnawing away at this budget. And we are presenting a budget that I think is probably one of the best that we've presented in a long time. And again, it is through the hard work and dedication of all of our principals, our supervisors, our administrative body and of course, our ever-so competent business administrator. So thank you.
First of all, I just want to apologize to Dr. Gorman for leaving your name off the presentation, so you should have been there. And I believe Mr. Gorsky will have a resolution to read.
Yes, that's okay. Madam Board President, the first resolution is for the transferance of two-point-five-million dollars of bond surplus against the debt service tax levy. So I would like to read that, get a vote, and then we can go into the budget resolution. Resolution of the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey designating the transfer of certain unexpended bond proceeds to fund 40 debt service. Whereas on March 4th, 2008, the Board of Education, the Board of Education, Township of Monroe and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey issued forty-one-million-nine-hundred-thousand dollars of school district bonds, Series 2008, known as the 2008 Bonds. And whereas the 2008 Bonds were issued to finance, A, the additional costs necessary for the construction of a new Monroe Township High School as previously approved by the voters of the Township of Monroe in December 2003. B, any necessary improvements, upgrades, apparatus, equipment, furniture and site work. And C, certain incidental expenses collectively to 2008 project. And whereas the proceeds of the 2008 Bonds were deposited in Fund 36 to be used for the 2008 project. And whereas the 2008 project has been completed and as of January 31st, 2014, two-million-eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-eleven dollars and six cents of the proceeds of the 2008 Bonds remain unencumbered and on deposit in Fund 36, the unencumbered 2008 proceeds. And whereas the Board of Education hereby desires to designate the transfer to Fund 40 debt service of a portion of the unencumbered 2008 proceeds from Fund 36 in an amount equal to two-million-five-hundred-thousand dollars. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education as follows. Section one, the board hereby authorizes the board secretary to transfer a portion of the unencumbered 2008 proceeds from Fund 36 in an amount equal to two-million-five-hundred-thousand dollars to offset the tax levy for fiscal year 2014-2015. Section two, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Is there a motion? Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Kaufman. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gorsky?
If anybody gets mad at me, I'm one of these other ones. I just want to thank, I just want to thank you, the administration, thank you, Mike, thank you, Dr. Hamilton, Dr. Gorman, even though you aren't on the presentation, just for everything that you've done here to make this budget successful. You know, we have to remember that over the last couple of years, we opened a high school, we rehabilitated a middle school, we've done a lot of things that caused a strain on the district and we had to do it because of the growth, the increased enrollment and the lack of state aid. But I just want to thank you for realizing, you know, what the taxpayers are going through in Monroe and reacting to it positively and I think that we're on the right track. We just need to keep fighting for our fair share of the state aid and keeping the, our elected officials' feet to the fire, but I think that we're doing the right thing here and I just want to thank you for your hard work and your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we'll have roll call.
Ms. Antelis.
Yes.
Ms. Armenio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Nostine.
Yes.
Mr. Preziosso.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mrs. Koleponowicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion transferring bond surplus passes unanimously. I will now read the resolution for the adoption of the 2014-2015 tentative budget. It is recommended that the members of the Board of Education approve the following amounts in resolution for the 14-15 tentative budget. Be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education, that the 2014-15 tentative general fund budget be adopted in the amount of one-hundred-and-one-million-six-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and a general fund local tax levy in the amount of eighty-eight-million-eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and a tentative special revenue fund in the amount of nine-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and a tentative debt service budget in the amount of ten-million-four-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and a tentative debt service local tax levy in the amount of seven-million-one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty dollars whereby the tentative 2014-2015 budget totals one-hundred-and-thirteen-million-one-hundred-and-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. And whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has been notified of state aid amounts and whereas such state aid amounts are for the 14-15
And whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has been notified of state aid amounts, and whereas such state aid amounts are, for the 14-15 categorical special education aid is $2,48,517, and for the 14-15 categorical security aid is $92,501, and for the 14-15 categorical transportation aid is $496,510, and for the 14-15 debt service aid is $682,635, and for 14-15 other state aid categories consisting of park readiness aid of $58,980, and per pupil grant aid of $58,980. And whereas Monroe Township Board of Education has estimated a state aid amount pursuant to application, and for the 2014-2015, the estimated extraordinary aid amount is $214,453. And whereas the state's failure to fully fund the School Funding Reform Act of 2008, as well as other factors, has provided insufficient financial support for programs and services contained in the base budget, necessitating the application of $804,098 of unused spending authority to be included in the base budget, and that said needs will be completed by the end of the budget year and will not be deferred or incrementally completed over a longer time. And whereas school district bylaw 0147, policy 3440, policy 4440, and NJAC 6A 23B 1.2 provides that the Board of Education shall establish in the annual school budget a maximum expenditure amount that may be allotted for such travel and expense reimbursement for the 2014-2015 school year. Now therefore be resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education hereby establishes the school district travel maximum for the 2014-15 school year at the tenant of sum of $158,422, and be it further resolved that the school business administrator shall track and record these costs to ensure the maximum amount is not exceeded. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the superintendent of schools and the business administrator board secretary file the required documents with the executive county superintendent.
Second. Mr. Chiarella, Ms. Antelis. Are there any comments or questions from anybody, members of the Board of Education? Mr. Prezioso?
Thank you, Mike. I was appointed chairman of the Finance Committee in January of this year. Since then, I've worked with business administrator Michael Gorsky and his assistant Laura Allen, sampling and inspecting vouchers as part of my duty as chairman. I believe that the 14-15 budget is well-constructed. Michael did a fine job. I will vote yes on this budget, knowing the hard work it took to get the budget cap, as instructed by the previous board in August of 2013. Before I make a vote, I would like to express my opinion. My focus is on student education, as well as the taxpayers of Monroe. I believe that my fiscally conservative nature will contribute to creating efficiency in future budgets, so we can offer programs that have the most educational value. I support this budget, but going forward, I will expect increased evaluation of all non-mandated items. We need to ensure that our taxpayers, and most importantly, our children, are best served. I am confident that our teachers will continue to improve student achievement, because in my opinion, our teachers have the greatest impact on our children's learning. I want to thank everybody involved with the budget, and Michael, again, you did a great job.
That's a team effort. Thanks.
Anyone else from the board wish to speak? Mr. Nostine?
Just a quick question. We had gotten a magazine from the School Boards Association, and they also list another category of aid called adjustment aid. And that was supposed to get us back in line with the amount of aid that we received in 2008, once they changed the funding formula. I'm just kind of wondering, where does that stand, and why don't we ever see that?
In the 2010-2011 school year, Monroe was cut and left with $238,696. The initial state pronouncement on that year was to expect a 15 percent across the district's reduction in your state aid award from the prior year. That's how this budget was constructed that year. Instead, what was cut was 15 percent of your budget size, and that led to a reduction of all but $238,000 of our state aid. Only one district had wound up at less, and that was Cranberry that year. Adjustment aid has been trying to help districts catch up by affording a percentage off that bottom dollar number where you're starting off with from 10-11. And we've been slowly catching up, but as I mentioned before, we're still receiving only 60 percent of what we did in 9-10. And adjustment aid, there is no award for us this year in adjustment aid.
Thank you. I also would like to thank the administration for their hard work in developing this budget. As the newest member of the board, or one of the newest members of the board, I can't take credit, nor can I take blame, depending on which side you are in this budget. Obviously, there was a board philosophy that was in place prior to my being elected. While I'm very, very happy with this budget, I too really think that this one, for lack of a better word, was relatively easy. We had a $2.5 million surplus that we were able to contribute to this. And I know that going forward, it's going to get a lot harder. So I really hope that we can all sharpen our crayons and our pencils so that we can really start to make an impact, because even with this budget and with the tax reduction and the increase in the ratables, this budget still went up considerably. But I will be supporting this budget, and I know that going forward, we're just going to have to start really looking a lot closer at things. And thank you for all your hard work, Mr. Gorsky.
Ms. Armenio?
Hi. I would like to also congratulate everyone on the hard work that they have done on the budget. However, I do have serious concerns going forward, that we are still increasing spending. Some of the reductions and the job that Mr. Gorsky especially has done, negotiating with outside vendors and taking care of things, and trying to bring everything to as much reduction as possible, we still have an increased spending. And I understand that we have a serious concern about continued enrollment. But the philosophy of going to cap automatically, again, was done in a previous board. And I also think that we have to be cognizant of the state. As much as we will fight, and I will fight also, to get more state recognition and more state funds, I do believe that we are strapped, and we have been strapped, with this situation for many, many years. And in some cases, we can fight very hard to get more, but we also have to come to terms with this, it seems, as a pattern that we have to be concerned with, with the state. So we have, we have a lot of issues. We will not have the kind of funds going into the next budget to reduce the levy. And I also think the reevaluation has a lot to do with where the budget is today, but it really doesn't have to do with the district's spending. It's going to be very difficult. So I do have concerns about this budget, but I admire the tenacity of Mr. Gorsky and the Finance Committee, and I think we still need to revisit a couple of other things. Thank you.
Anyone else on the board? Mr. Poy?
Much of what I'm going to say has already been said, but I'm saying it for additional emphasis. I actually think that we've done a, not we, but the central administration, and particularly Mr. Gorsky and Dr. Hamilton, they've done a miraculous job in constructing this budget. And I'd like to point out the fact that we actually have a reduction in the total amount of state and federal aid that we're receiving. Even though it's paltry, we've got, we are dealing with a reduction in that for next year. I think it's amazing that our district can find the funds within the regular budget. We can find the funds to maintain our buildings, to put up a partial roof replacement at the middle school, and to do renovations within that middle school to provide additional classrooms. To me, that's just absolutely amazing. We have to replace some worn-out buses and vans that are used for transporting students. We're replacing some hazardous flooring in the Barclay Brook School. All of this is being done within this budget that's being proposed. We didn't go out for any referendum. We're not getting extra aid. We're able to find the funds by making cuts in other areas. And something else to keep in mind is there are factors that are pushing for higher budgets. We've got this increased cost in health benefits. Although Mr. Gorsky was very successful in negotiating lower rates, still, that's a pressure that's always going to be pushing for a higher budget. The state's now requiring that the local boards contribute more toward pension contributions for the employees in the PERS system. Monroe, unfortunately, some people might say fortunately, but Monroe, every year, we're faced with more and more students. And now with the new state test, the new park test that's coming up, we're required to have technology in place. So to me, it's absolutely, in my opinion, and I've worked in education many, many years, I think it's absolutely amazing that this district is going to be able to do what this budget provides, and still maintain that state cap, which is what the board set back in the fall for this administration to do. So I do commend everyone that is, you know, is proposing this budget. I just think you've done a superb job, even though there may be others that disagree with that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Also, congratulations. I don't really think there's much more to be said. I think you've done a fantastic job to bring in new items and still be at cap and have a tax reduction. I think you've done a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Before I open this up to the public for your input on the budget, when the state gives us 3.26 percent, unfortunately, the most, the majority of the rest of that money has to come from the taxpayers. And unfortunately, 85 percent of our money comes from the local taxpayers. In the past four years, we have decreased our tax revenue spending to the public greatly. When we had a tax impact of 18.7 cents in 2011-2012, that was because of the opening of the new high school and the renovations of the Monroe Township Middle School. And we were still able to do that under that current budget. The gradual decreases in taxes is due to the excellent planning of the administration and the Board of Education, and the desire of the board to give back to the community the money from the high school referendum. There are a lot of districts that would have spent all that money on the new high school, and it was the board's desire in the past to give that money back as tax relief. I would like to commend and thank Dr. Hamilton, Mr. Gorsky, Laura Allen, and the Business Office for the excellent job in creating this budget. It was not an easy thing to do this year, and as you've heard from other board members, we've added and kept a lot into this budget. It's important to give credit, not just to this board, but to the boards in the past that go back four or five years, that had the foresight to make the difficult choices that affected all the future budgets. So I think this is a phenomenal budget, and I'm very proud of everyone. And this also includes the principals in their schools for being diligent in coming up with, creating their school budgets in a very nice way. So if there's no more comments from members of the board, I'm going to open it up to the public for, this will be a public forum, just on the budget. We will have, since we have so many people here today, we will adhere to our three-minute limit.
You always do. Mark Klein, Seven Crenshaw Court. Michael, Dr. Hamilton, excellent job. Your backs are against the wall, and you're stuck. You've got to make do with what you have to make do with. But something I said while I was on the board is that the prior two years, we've taken $3 million from the bonds from the high school to reduce taxes. This should be the last $2.5 million. So, and then you also took the extra funds that were left from two budgets ago. That all goes in for this year. Next year, you don't have that. I also want to let the people know, it's not only the state, it's the State Supreme Court. If you remember, after Christie made the big cuts, Mr. Schiera from the Newark Education Law Center filed another suit, brought it in front of the Supreme Court to roll back the cuts that were made to his school districts. Instead of the Supreme Court ruling that it all should go back, they only ruled for the 31 or 32 Title I districts. They got the rollback. Nobody else got it. And we were at, what, $200,000,000? The money from the high school, the extra bond money, we're going to have to increase the high schools, based on the population which we've discussed. The middle school, we were supposed to put 10 classrooms in. Where's the money going to come from? I thought that the bond money would have gone towards that, if we're allowed to do that. As you remember, when we spoke about last month, I believe they call them "rod grants", Michael, is where the state, and this is for the people that hear, where the state will give districts like ours, grant money to repair infrastructure, whether it be roofs, new classrooms. We get nothing. And when they come out and they say that we are property wealth, if they go property wealth per student, then why don't they back out everybody over 65 that doesn't have any children, and only use the properties that pertain to the children? Instead, we're penalized because at this point, we're about 50 percent adults, and all your new developments are going to be children. It's all families. So the state can stand on their head. They are unfair, which we've spoken about. Oh, by the way, before my time is up, and I'll bring up more later. In the home news last week, there was an article from the Associated Press that there was a school district in another state, and somehow, my girlfriend threw the papers out, but I'm going to try to get it. There was a school district in another state that filed suit against the State Department of Education, I'll finish two seconds, because of the inequity in state funding. As I've said time and time again, we can no longer do what we're doing. You cannot put all this, the state cannot put all of the costs related to a successful school system on the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done.
Karen Castaldo, MTEA President, Forest Cypress Point Lane, Jackson Township, New Jersey. I'd like to, on behalf of all of our members, thank Mr. Gorsky, Dr. Hamilton, and Dr. Gorman, and the team behind that put this budget together. Students are impacted. Staff isn't impacted, and it's the first tax decrease in 20 years. I'm going to be short and sweet, but you guys got an innovative on this one. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. Steve Ryback, 23, Riviera Drive. I know there are great challenges before us, as many of us have said, and I'm very well aware of, but for this time, I must take my hat off to the administration, especially Mike Gorsky, for outstanding job. I know how difficult coming, coming up with a budget like this is, and you certainly deserve the praise you're hearing today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ira Tesler, 1188 Drive. Like to pretty much use the word that Mr. Poy did, amazing on the budget. Year after year after year, we can, we constantly bring down the tax rate, do things in the budget, not go out for referendum for construction, and I think this year is a culmination of that, and we'd like to see that continue. But congratulations on a good job this year. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Bob Zaglarski, 162, Tournament Drive. Of course, I'd like to recognize Dr. Hamilton, Mr. Gorsky, and Mr. Prezioso, as well as the rest of the board for your efforts with regard to the budget. I would ask that, if I could get a couple of numbers before the end of the meeting, you don't have to look right now for them, but if you could give me the school tax rate for $100 of assessed valuation for 2014 that you're using, as well as the total amount of tax ratables for Monroe Township for 2014. I know that, another number that you probably just got from...
Okay.
What took you so long?
Yes, Mr. Zaglarski.
Yes, Mr. Zaglarski. The school tax rate on a new equalized value, of course, is 1.3434. And the net equalized ratables is $6,985,457,858.
And were you, did you do any numbers on the, of the $114 in tax reduction, how much of that is basically attributable to the increase in ratables? And if you don't have it, don't worry about it, but that would be something else that I'd like to know eventually, but, and that's it. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Anyone else from the public? Then we will close the public forum for the budget, and we will have a roll call.
Ms. Antelis.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
I abstain.
So noted. Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski. We'll come back. Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Nostine.
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole Poniewicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
Are we waiting for Mr. Zarneski?
Unless if you want to wait for Mr. Zarneski.
If he votes no, it still passes. Pretty much.
I could get in writing from him, his vote on this, for the record, but the motion still passes.
Okay. We need a bell on that door.
Do we applaud? Members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, we are voting on the adoption of the 1415 Tenet of Budget, and one board member outstanding is Mr. Zarneski. Your vote, please.
Yes, and sorry for the delay. I thought people would have more to say about the budget.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We can move on with the agenda, and at this time, we'll number seven, Mr. Joe Hamoki, the Chairperson of the Ad-Hoc Committee, has a recommendation to the Board of Education.
My name is Joe Hamoki, 61 Hoffman Road. I too would like to echo what has been said. Congratulations to the administration and to the board, but I also like to tell you that after I read my recommendations, there'll be some challenges ahead of the next few years. The Ad-Hoc Committee, I'm Chairman of the Ad-Hoc Committee. The Ad-Hoc Committee for District Growth was formed to review pending and proposed growth in Monroe Township and its impact on student population and school facilities. The committee met four times over the past two years, and most recently on March the 4th, to review the demographic study prepared for the board by Whitehall Associates. The unanimous consensus of the committee, and we have about 30 members on the committee, that a significant increase of approximately 1,000 students on the elementary level will occur within the next five years, and that facilities expansion will be required. To provide pertinent data that will help to drive board's decision on where and what to build, the Ad-Hoc Committee for the District respectfully recommends to the Monroe Township Board of Education, as a first step, that they authorize a redistricting study on the elementary level and continue with the Monroe Township school stopgap measure, which was referred to by somebody before, that's the additional classroom in the middle school, creating additional classroom space through interior renovations, and finally plan for a possible referendum. Upon completion of the redistricting study, the Ad-Hoc Committee for District Growth will reconvene to further evaluate and provide input to the Board of Edu, input to the Board of Education to aid in their planning. And that's the recommendation, so I hope the board will pass this recommendation and get the results back as soon as possible so the committee can meet again and continue with the deliberations. Anybody have any questions? Any board members?
No. Thank you, Mr. Hamoki. There's an item on Mr. Gorsky's BA report this evening that has to do with the redistricting survey.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, Mr. Hamoki, I just want to thank you for giving your time and your service, not only on this, but, you know, in the past, you've been a great member of our community, and thank you.
I gave my phone here.
Kathy, before you go, did you get a motion?
I'll make a motion, too.
A second.
Ms. Antelis, Mr. Nostine. Any comments or questions?
I'm sorry, what's the motion?
It is to accept the recommendation from the Ad-Hoc Committee.
Is that, correct me if I'm wrong, that's $10,000, I believe, I saw that as a number for the cost for the report for redistricting. Is that accurate?
That's a separate item on the BA report, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Arminio?
Several of the board members did attend that Ad-Hoc Committee meeting, and it was well, well attended by members of the community, which I am very appreciative of, and I hope members of the community continue to participate and come through. After all, we represent you, and your ideas and concerns are very important. And I also made a comment at that committee meeting that I'll just briefly say that participation, we are going to be, again, and I suppose well invite new students into our district in the near future, but we are just really dealing with the effect of building and planning. So I urge everybody with their participation, please also get informed on other levels, in other levels of government, to see how this impacts the Board of Education. While we are happy to educate our children, and when they come, we will educate them, I think we need to be mindful and cognizant of the cause and how this comes about, and I encourage everybody to participate and inform themselves in that regard first. Thank you.
Mr. Nostine, the cost of the redistricting is $9,500 of the survey. Anyone else from the board?
Just a quick comment on who, because from what I understood, all board members could not attend this because it was a committee meeting. So I, you know, I don't know where we're at with looking into that, and I know we've barred board members from attending committee meetings who are not on those committees, but I think this is something that's important enough where board members should have been able to attend, even if they couldn't take part in it, because it's the, you know, it's the future of our district. So I just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Arminio?
On that note, the Open Public Meetings Act requires certain, certain notifications and then a public comment if all, if we have a quorum at the board. So if we can get a, an address that, I agree with Mr. Chiarell, that everyone wants to be informed, so we may need to address that and/or open the Ad-Hoc Committees as a public, as a public meeting of the Board of Education. We could do that. But we might, we might want to get a, an opinion on that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nostine?
In that vein, that's exactly what the Township Municipalities been doing with their budget rounds. They basically, it's announced, open public meeting, anybody can attend, and there actually is no public forum. So we may want to look into that and see the legality of doing something like that. It's just, it's just a cost, basically, for the announcement. So I think that's definitely a good way to proceed, because it is so important. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antelis.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Nostine.
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole Poniewicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion to accept the recommendation from the Ad-Hoc Committee unanimously passes.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will go to the public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Again, we will adhere to our three-minute limit.
Mark Klein, 7 Crenshaw. Pertaining to all the new communities that are going in, to give you a more accurate way of determining what is coming in, how many of them are families, and try to base the federal figure, I believe, is 1.7 children per family, even if you go one per family. If you, if somebody on the board goes to the municipal building, go down to zoning and planning, speak to John Riggs. They usually have a printout that will show communities that are being built, like Monroe Manor and Stratford and so on, and the new ones that have been approved. And there's a lot of them, and they're all families. I think that is what I had. Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Renee Balavan, I'm short. Okay. 485 Skylark Drive. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to add something regarding the problem at the last meeting with Anthony. I'm not sure if you are aware of the huge increase of antisemitism and racism in our country and around the world today. It seems as though history is on the brink of repeating itself again. I'm here today as a daughter of Holocaust survivors who lost 95 percent of their family in concentration camps. When growing up, I never had the family that anybody here had and enjoyed every day and during holidays. My relatives were killed in a very inhumane way, with their ashes flying up a smokestack. It disturbs me greatly that Anthony doesn't know the difference between somebody raising their hand in the air to be heard and that of a Nazi salute, which is sticking your hand at an angle and not straight up. It's not funny, nor is it okay, to make inappropriate comments regarding Jews and the Holocaust. Anthony, I just want everyone to know, and Anthony as well, even though I'm speaking directly to you, that we pray to the same God, and if we're stuck with a pin, we all bleed the same way. The only difference is that I like my fellow citizens, and what happened the last time, it may, it seems not to appear that Anthony likes Jews. He gives the wrong impression to young students that it's okay to ridicule Jewish students, and it's not okay. In memory of my mother's cousins, who were all under 10 years of age, who never had the chance to go to school, play with friends in the playground, or even have girlfriends, I ask Anthony to resign from the board. As a member of the Henry Rickles Holocaust Memorial Committee, we are not going to tolerate this type of behavior. Thank you.
Madam Board President, is this to the agenda?
Yes, it is.
I didn't see it on the agenda, I guess. I must have missed it.
It's, we had a revised agenda. It came out from Dr. Hamilton this morning. It's a number...
It wasn't online, or it wasn't in my packet? Okay.
No. He sent out a confidential, and it's number K on the board action items.
How did everybody else know about it? Because it's not in the, is it the one that's in the back?
Well, there was a revised agenda put out there and on the website.
So it's in the back? And it's, because I went on the website, I didn't see it on the website.
Yeah, it was on the website.
Yes, Ira Tesler, 11 LA Drive. This is in reference to item K under Board Action, which I got from the website this afternoon. I just want to add a couple pieces of information that you need to consider for when you vote on that item later on. After the last special board meeting, I reviewed the video of the February 10th board meeting. During that video, when I was walking up to the mic at this time, Mr. Prezioso gave me a Nazi salute three times on the video, and says, "You don't go like that." And it is on public record, so it is on the meeting, is on the video. Also, in a recent case last year in East Sham, New Jersey, a board member made some antisemitic comments to another troop general, to all the board members out there and to the community. That board member initially was going through a similar process, there was a little turmoil in the community, but that board member eventually did the right thing and honorable thing. First, he apologized, which I'm kind of upset that there was no apology made at the last meeting. And the second thing is that board member eventually resigned from her position on New Jersey school boards and the Board of Education, and I wish the same would happen here. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Judith Sherman, 12 Berkshire Drive. I'm a Holocaust survivor, and my father died in a concentration camp, my mother did, my brother, and all my relatives. And any comment that is made flippantly about the Holocaust is just very inappropriate and painful.
Thank you.
Deborah Schneider, 8 Regal Court. I have known Anthony for a number of years, and for the record, I am Jewish, and I think he and I get along very, very well. We've seen each other on social occasions, so I know that the comment that he doesn't like Jews is incorrect. We are all guilty, or most of us have been, at some point in time, to open our mouths and have the wrong words fall out. There's an expression, and I've used it, "Open mouth, insert foot." And as soon as the words fall out, we wish a thousand times over that we could have taken them back. And I don't think Mr. Prezioso said this in a mean or vindictive manner. I think it was an unfortunate comment that was made, and I'm sure that, in the essence, that he is very apologetic and very sorry for it. But as far as the comment that he doesn't like Jews, I think that is totally inappropriate and 100 percent wrong.
Anyone else from the public?
Nina Wolf, 10 Monterey Court. I work very closely with the Rickles Holocaust Memorial Committee and have done so for the past 11 years. I am Jewish. I am not a second-generation survivor. I am actually a third and fourth-generation American. The Board of Education is no doubt aware that one of the many programs that Rickles supplies to the community are Holocaust speakers that come to the schools and speak to the students. There is an essay contest every year, and this year, close to 300 sophomores listened to the survivors and wrote very heartfelt essays about what they would do if they made a Holocaust denier, what they might have done if they lived during that time, why it is important to study about the Holocaust, about genocide, about hatred, about bullying. It all comes into the present day. It is certainly possible for a mistake to be made in wording. However, I think that it is very important for the Board of Education to state openly that they are opposed 100 percent to any comments that might be taken to heart by people who have lived through the Holocaust, are aware of genocide anywhere in this country, not in this country, but around the world, hatred and bigotry in this country, there is no place for it. You have anti-bullying programs in your schools. You need to stand up for what you believe. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ellen Con, 11 Crenshaw Court. I spoke at the last meeting in support of Anthony. As a few of the other speakers, I am Jewish and a member of the community. I know Anthony. I know Anthony is not antisemitic, is not racist, is not... We have some speakers here who spoke very well, and the horrors of the Holocaust must be presented and known. But to equate Anthony to being antisemitic, to not liking Jews, to doing anything but maybe being a little inappropriate inadvertently, I think that you are carrying this way too far, and I hope that... far, and I hope that it can be done away with, because you are making it something that it's not. Please don't do this to Anthony. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we will close the public forum and go to the approval of the minutes for the Public Board of Education meeting on January 15, 2014.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella?
Second.
Second by Ms. Antellus. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Are you abstaining from the, from the 15th?
February 20th, it was a closed session meeting.
No, I, this is the Public Board of Education meeting of January 15.
Oh, okay.
You were, you were here?
Yes.
Okay. The closed session meeting of January 15, 2014.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella?
Second.
Second by Ms. Antellus. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the approval of the minutes for the Public Board of Education meeting, February 10, 2014.
I still move it.
Ms. Arminio, Mr. Kaufman. Again, any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Poy. The closed session meeting of February 10, 2014.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, Ms. Antellus, let's fall in favor.
Aye.
Too many tonight. Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Poy, Mr. Preziosso. The Special Public Board of Education meeting of February 20, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chiarella, Ms. Antellus. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Poy, Mr. Preziosso. And lastly, the closed session meeting, February 20, 2014.
So moved.
Mr. Notstein?
Second.
Ms. Arminio? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Zarneski, Mr. Preziosso, Mr. Poy. Okay. Now, we'll go to committee reports. Are there any committees that need to report this evening? Mr. Kaufman?
Sure. This evening, we had a curriculum meeting. There was one agenda item and one agenda, I'm sorry, I'm a little congested and not speaking well tonight. One agenda item. We spoke a little bit this evening about reevaluating our TAG program here throughout the district. This was our first meeting. It was the only item we talked about for an hour, and we are going to be continuing to move forward to look at both the curriculum side of what it is that we're going to be looking to include in the TAG program, as well as the entrance criteria to allow students to be part of the TAG program. So, nothing real to report, other than it was our first meeting, and we will continue to look at the TAG program, and we had some good recommendations, some good round-robin discussions this evening, and we'll continue to keep you updated as we move forward in time.
Thank you. Anyone else have a committee report? Seeing none, we'll go to the superintendent's report. Dr. Hamilton?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, all. First, before I begin my superintendent's report, I was going to share some information with you about DECA, but our student rep already did that. But I would like to take this opportunity to share with the Board that Beth Ann Ozbach class at Woodland School has been selected as the first-place, second-place, and honorable mention winners for the New Jersey State Bar Association 2014 Law Fair Mock Trial Competition. Each year, a first and second-place winner selected, along with an honorable mention. Three of our four cases were picked as the top trials in the state. This is a remarkable accomplishment for the first one class, the first time that one class won all three top honors. The students will be presenting their winning essays, their winning cases, on May 29 before judges, attorneys, and juries of their peers, of elementary school students, and this will be at the home of the New Jersey Bar Foundation, at the New Jersey Law Center, 1 Constitution Square, and that's in New Brunswick. Each child will be assigned a role, and the trials will be performed between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. In addition, the children will be performing their trials at the Monroe Township Municipal Courthouse on June 13 for their peers, families, and special guests. So congratulations to Beth Ann and her students. Also, moving on to the superintendent's report this evening, I'd like to share with you the enrollment numbers at our schools, showing the comparison between January and February, the close of January and February, and also the comparison between last year, February, and this year, February. Also including your reporter are our out-of-district placements and our number of students who are on homebound instruction due to illness or some other condition that warrants homebound instruction. Our Friday drills and lockdowns are listed in your agenda for each of our schools, and that takes me to my personnel report. So, Madam Board President and members of the Board, it is recommended by the superintendent that Personnel Items A through JJ be approved by roll call vote, with the exception of number 3 under HH and number 25 under double I. Those two offers are being rescinded.
Which ones? Yes.
Number 3 under double H and number 25 under double I.
Mr. Chiarella, I believe you made a motion. Was there, is there a second? Mr. Braverman? Are there any comments or questions for Dr. Hamilton? Seeing, Ms. Arminio?
Yes. Could you explain Club MUD on CC Personnel Item? Is that where we are?
CC.
Am I not, I might not be, yeah, we're on Personnel, right?
Yes, we're on Personnel. That's actually an art club that's held at the middle school.
Okay, and Programming Club, is that a coding? Is that for coding?
Yes.
So we do have a coding club, that's great. Okay. And the exceptions, you said, were these before the Personnel Committee yet? Any of these? Or not put in front of the Personnel Committee yet?
They were not, and normally are not. These are new appointments.
Okay, so they're, so the Personnel Committee doesn't have to approve of these prior to this?
No.
Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes, and recuse myself on item EE.
Recuse on double E. So noted. Ms. Arminio?
I think at this time, I'm going to say yes, except for CC and DD. There's a no until further information.
Beg your pardon, ma'am. CC and-
And DD.
DD.
Thank you.
So noted. Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes, except for CC and Delta Delta.
That's a no?
D.
No for Charlie Charlie, Delta Delta, please.
So noted. Thank you. Mr. Preziosso?
Yes, on everything but CC and double D.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolopanowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Personnel Items A through double J, with the exception of 3 double H and 25 II, approved.
Thank you.
Who's the second?
Marv.
Marv. First was Chiarella. Moving on to Board Action Items, I will read this in two parts. K will be read separately. Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that Board Action Items A through J be approved by roll call vote.
Mr. Chiarella? Mr. Braverman? Comments or questions? Mr. Notstein?
With regard, I think I'm in the right place for the field trips. Is that what we're approving?
Yes, sir.
Why do only some field trips include a cost, yet they're designated as district-funded? I noticed on the attachment page.
They just pay for busing. It's just internal busing.
I can't hear you.
Okay, so the-
Internal busing.
Okay, so, okay, so district-funding ones are strictly just for, when they don't list it, that's, that's the, means that it's the transportation, is what you're saying?
Where the kids pay for the trip totally by themselves.
Well, then I would say an S. I saw that.
Yes, but it's his.
The ones that say D. Okay. And also, another question with regards to the student suspensions. Could maybe next time, there be like an abbreviations table, a map up on all the abbreviations in that, in that paperwork?
Okay, sure. Not a problem.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you. In fact, maybe it'll be a good idea for me to just get a copy of the Code of Conduct handbook for you, and that way you'll have it.
That'd be cool. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Preziosso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolopanowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through J passed.
Thank you.
Moving on, Board Action Item, letter K. It is recommended by the Board of Education, one, to authorize and direct the president of the Board of Education to file as the complainant a School Ethics Act complaint against Board Member Anthony Preziosso pursuant to the School Ethics Act's NJSA 18A:12-21; and, two, authorize Board Counsel to represent the Board President in the aforementioned matter. The Board President, the Superintendent of Schools, the Business Administrative Board Secretary, and Board Counsel hereby are authorized and directed to take all necessary and appropriate steps to implement this action of the Board.
So moved. Ms. Antellus? Mr. Braverman? Comments or questions, Ms. Antellus?
Statute 18A:12-22 of the School Ethics Act reads, "In our representative form of government, it is essential that the conduct of members of local boards of education and local school administrators hold the respect and confidence of the people. These Board members and administrators must avoid conduct which is in violation of their public trust or which creates a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated. I believe the actions of Mr. Anthony Preziosso have clearly violated this statute. At the February 10 meeting, Mr. Preziosso approached Mr. Ira Tesler, a member of the public, and attempted to make some sort of, in his words, joke which included words such as Nazi, German salute, and being Jewish. Mr. Tesler took offense at these comments and let Board President Kathy Kolopanowicz, Superintendent Dr. Kenneth Hamilton, and Business Administrator Mike Gorsky know, through an email, that he was offended by Mr. Preziosso's remarks. Mr. Preziosso was notified of Mr. Tesler's email, and apology for offending Mr. Tesler was asked for. Mr. Preziosso, instead of apologizing, hired an attorney and refused to acknowledge any wrongdoing. What if a parent had stood before this Board, telling us a staff member had said that to them, and they told the administration they were offended, but no action was taken? Wouldn't this clearly be a case of violating the public trust? The statute states it is essential that the conduct of members of local boards of education and local administrators hold the respect and confidence of the people. What if it had been student to student, student to staff member, and no administrative action was taken? This Board would be outraged. But as the majority of us on this Board know, our administration would never allow that to happen, and neither should this Board when it's one of its members. We, as a Board, are held to the standard stated in that statute. Therefore, we, as a Board, must take action tonight. At the conclusion of this statement, I will be voting yes to file ethics charges against Mr. Preziosso. I want the public to know, this is not something I do easily or take lightly. This action will cost taxpayer dollars. Because Mr. Preziosso is a Board of Education member, he has the right to have an attorney represent him, paid for by the Board of Education. But as school Board members, we are entrusted by the public to make the best decisions for educating the children of our community, as well as decisions about millions of taxpayer dollars. I'm making this motion because I don't believe the public, this Board, and the administration could in any way trust the judgment of a school Board member who doesn't care that his joking comments are considered biased and offensive to the public.
Anyone else? Mr. Notstein?
Yes, I just have a question. I have a complaint in front of me from the website of the School Ethics, and in order to file a complaint, there needs to be the statement of facts, which I believe we just had. The date of occurrence is easy, but there's also needs to be an assertion that this is a violation of. And I have the 10 rules that we signed to agree as our Code of Ethics. And just before we can vote on this, I'd love to know which exactly of these 10 ethics code violations are we looking at?
I believe that our attorney gave us that advice at the last closed session that we had in regard to the filing of ethics charges.
Right, but which one are we going for? She did not state specifically which of the 10 are we in violation, or is Mr. Preziosso in violation of?
I, I-
I'm sorry, can I just say something? Because I actually went on the website myself and found where a Board of Education member had gone into the public and made a comment, and when I looked at the administrative law judge's finding, his was the 18A:12-22, where the Board member violated the trust of the public.
Well, that could well be, but in order to file a complaint, you need to fill out this form. And in this form, I'll submit this as Exhibit A, this form clearly states that I assert this to be a violation of, and then there's the 10 Code of Ethics that-
There could be more than one ethics violation that had been charged.
Well, I agree with that, but which, which of the 10?
Well, there, I know there, there's one that has to do with confidentiality.
Oh, so we're, I didn't hear anything about confidentiality tonight.
We didn't hear anything about any specific ethics charge.
How could we vote on this resolution until we know what charge?
It has to do with 18A.
Because the advice that was given by our attorney in closed session said that, and this came from our attorney, the resolution came from the attorney.
Well, I don't doubt that, but the resolution is very vague. How, how could we even vote on anything? We also, an ethics charge, typically, I would like to see before we do this, since we really don't know what violation we're talking about, maybe could we try to save some money and maybe get a, an advisory opinion from the School Board Association? We're already paying money for that, that would be a no charge. I estimate that this will probably be $10,000 to $20,000 in charges to our district at a time when we just said we're trying to cut, cut payments, where an advisor, an advisory opinion would be no charge, and then maybe if that comes to say that, yeah, there's definitely something here, then maybe we could then proceed with, you know, going to the next step and say, okay, we have an advisory opinion, you're saying there is definitely a violation, now let's, let's go to the state and, and file that complaint.
Well, I, I don't want to go into the discussion that we had in closed session, but this is the route that our attorney advised us to go.
I was in that closed session, and this is, I didn't, this is the first I'm hearing of this. I mean, obviously, I can't say anything, but this was not what we had talked about in closed session. We, I mean-
I, I believe this was part of the conversation.
Maybe we were at a different closed session.
If I remember correctly, this was part of the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Arminio?
The conversation was on many items, so if you want to say that was part of it, there were additional items that were also discussed. So this is one of the items that were discussed, so.
This is the item that is on the agenda?
Yes.
And you can vote any way you wish to vote.
Okay, thank you.
Any, Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I would just like to just mention that at the last meeting, I voted to push this over into this meeting so that Mr. Preziosso could obtain legal counsel, and then also maybe formulate an apology. I don't, I don't know if that's happened. I've, I've heard various things. I've heard people come up and say he was very sorry. I've heard people say that he, he hasn't apologized. So I have not heard of a public apology, and that is why I voted last time, to give him the time to do that, and from what I see, that has not happened. And that changes my mind. I think we need to send a message that even, you know, jokes of this kind will not be tolerated here, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for it.
Anyone else? Mr. Poy?
Well, unfortunately, I was away for the month of February and, and, or maybe four-
Well, unfortunately, I was away for the month of February, and/or maybe fortunately, I missed all this controversy, but I did try to inform myself as best I could. I watched videos of the Board Meetings multiple times, in fact. I read whatever I could read in the newspaper, which really wasn't too much. I talked to a few people, but not very many people on the Board, and I too, as Mr. Nostine had done, and I have to add that I did this without any knowledge that he was going to bring this up, but I also felt that any kind of ethics charge would have to fall on this Code of Ethics that we all sign when we do our pledge. And I was having difficulty trying to identify exactly what code of the, which one of the ethics he had possibly violated based on the information I had. So like Mr. Nostine, I basically, I don't feel I can vote on this particular motion without having more knowledge than I presently have. Clearly, if, and this is just now my personal opinion, clearly if Mr. Presiosso made a statement, which it appears that he did, he made a statement after the public meeting to a member of our public, whether or not he intended to be malicious or offensive with that statement, that I cannot judge. But if the other person was offended, then I would have expected that other person to in some way have indicated that, to provide that opportunity. I gather that that did not happen that night, but it became known the following day from what I can ascertain. I do believe, as one of our public speakers said, sometimes we say things and then we immediately realize, you know, we shouldn't have said that. And I've always followed the, my personal rule that if I discover that I have offended someone unintentionally, then I will do my utmost to make an apology and to make amends so that we can move forward and live together peacefully or work together, whatever the case may be. But my great difficulty is in knowing which particular of these Code of Ethics has been violated here. I was not privy to the closed session meetings. I did not get the minutes that provided that kind of information, so I'm a bit of a quandary in terms of voting on this particular motion. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to reiterate, again, it's not specifically those. If you go into the New Jersey School Department of Education, you will see rulings that cite 18A12-22, which again, say, Board Members must avoid conduct which is in violation of their public trust. And that's what this gentleman at another school Board was found guilty of. It had nothing to do with any of those 12. It was 18A. This is part of the School Ethics Act.
Mr. Kaufman?
Just for everyone's clarification, you can all hear me, right? Because again, I'm kind of congested and I'm a little clogged up. All I hear is my own voice, and that's pretty sad. When we had the executive session, we had attorney advice, and the incident that happened at the, I think it was the January meeting, was just one of a couple of events that Mr. Presiosso has, in effect, done over the past few months.
Mr. Kaufman, just make sure that you're not repeating anything that came at a closed session?
No, I'm not. So unfortunately, the way I read this list here, there's a couple of things that we can, that may come close to items that one can say would be the violations that we're talking about here, and it was mentioned here in public. Item number five, "I will refrain from inappropriate conduct at public meetings. When making public statements, I will refrain from disparaging my fellow Board Members or others on a personal, social, racial, or religious basis." That's one of them. There's also an item in here, and again, it's unfortunate that a couple could fall into this. It should, you know, it's a hard thing to do when a Board Member has to do this to another Board Member. Item number nine, or number nine, "I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the school which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the school. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and concert with my, in concert with my fellow Board Members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools." So unfortunately, there could be a couple of items that actually would fall into the category. I think we could universally agree that this was a lack of judgment in all cases, whether you know Mr. Presiosso or you don't know Mr. Presiosso. One can say that this was a cataclysmic lack of judgment, and I personally believe that we maintain the sacred trust of the community, and as Board Members, we have to operate at a slightly higher bar. It is our duty to make sure that we act and behave in an appropriate manner at all times, not just when we're in a meeting, at a public session, in an offsite, or representing the public at large. And regardless, this was a very lack, a very poor lack of judgment, and that's part of something that we have to do at this job. We have to exercise extremely good judgment and extremely fair and conscientious decisions when we exercise our duties as Board Members. And regardless whether you're for or against Mr. Presiosso, I personally believe this was a very, very poor judgment call, if you will. Thank you.
Mr. Nostine?
Just a correction. Mr. Kaufman is referring to Item Five of the Code of Ethics, and it clearly states at the bottom that there's two items on this list that are not included in the School Ethics Act and are not legally required. I just wanted to make that point because obviously, I would have seen that too if that was actually a real law. That is just a suggestion, albeit a good one, but it is just a suggestion and is not a legal requirement. I feel that this Board could accomplish the same thing for a lot less money if we wanted to draw up a public reprimand, because at the end of the day, no matter what this Board is hopeful for, this is not going to arise to getting him off this Board and overturning an election. Typically, if you do look at the school site and you see the charges and the punishments, it always ends up that typically they're going to be removed from the Board if there's a fiduciary break in the trust with the public. And that, no one is talking that in this instance. So at the end of the day, the pragmatic approach here would be to say, let's put the $20,000 that we're going to spend on this, let's put this towards the achievement of our students. Mr. Braverman mentioned, I believe, at the January 15th meeting that we need to be talking more about student achievement. I don't see that happening here. We can accomplish the same thing with maybe a mentoring program for Mr. Presiosso or a Board Member helping him instead of trying to get him off the Board, because that is not going to happen this route. That will happen with the elections. Maybe.
Mr. Braverman?
I think 18A supersedes the ethics list that we all signed, and 18A is the law. Had a student said this to another student, we'd be having a hearing. If an administrator or a teacher said it to anybody, they'd be suspended with pay and have a hearing. This is not unusual. I think Mr. Presiosso made a bad comment. I think he's got to be challenged, and that's what this motion is going to do. And I don't think everything is put on, I don't think everything is the lowest common denominator of money. There's a higher ethic than just money.
Anyone else?
Okay, I have a comment before we vote. First of all, I think it's a very sad day when the Board of Education has to deal with anything like this. Second, when a member of the public or even a Board Member contacts me and asks for something, it is my responsibility as the Board President to act on it. I don't believe anybody on this Board is saying that Mr. Presiosso is not a good person. I don't believe anybody is thinking that what he said he didn't say jokingly, but what might be funny to one person is not funny to somebody else. In my opinion, the comments that were made were thoughtless and inappropriate. We've all said things, as everybody has mentioned, that we would like to take back as soon as we say it, and I know I have. I probably said it to Board Members myself, but when you realize that you've done something wrong or you've said something that offended somebody, the first thing you do is apologize to them, and I probably made some apologies to some Members of this Board and maybe even some Members of the public. If an apology had been made in this case right away, we would not be here discussing this matter. There've been Members of the public that have asked the Board of Education to apologize to Mr. Tesler and his family, and with all due respect for the Tesler family, I don't believe it's up to the Board of Education to make that apology to Mr. Tesler, as we were all unaware of the comments that were made at the time. I believe it is up to the individual person who made the comments to apologize. The Board could make Mr. Presiosso apologize, but there would, if we had to resort to that, there really isn't any point in the apology. We need, as a Board, to abide by our own rules and policies if we expect our staff and students to do so. We are supposed to be role models for our children. If a teacher had said this, made this comment, we would have had to do an affirmative action investigation. If it was a student, it would have been an HIB issue. There is no denying that it was said, Mr. Presiosso has admitted to it, and it's also on videotape, that this happened. So that is all I have to say on this subject, and if there's no more discussion, we will have a roll call as to the filing of ethics charges by the Board President.
Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
No.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
No.
Mr. Poy?
Say.
Mrs. Cola Panowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
Thank you.
And that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
At this time, we will go to the Business Administrator's Report.
Madam Board President and Members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through O be approved by consent roll call.
Second. I'll put this to Mr. Kaufman and Ken Chiarella.
Luke Kaufman first and Ken Chiarella second.
Since they seem to be twins tonight. Any comments or questions for Mr. Gorsky? Are you seeing none? Roll call?
Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Presiosso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes, except I recuse myself on Item O.
So noted. Mrs. Cola Panowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through O passes. That concludes my report. Thank you.
That was quick. Board President's Report, I have a couple items today. The first one is on February 28th. I had an opportunity to participate in a Reading Across America Day at the invitation of the Oak Tree Apple Gorth PTA. I had a wonderful time reading Dr. Seuss' books to fifth grade class, and when I finished reading, I had the opportunity to attend a presentation by Mrs. Hill's fourth grade class, and it was a presentation on great Americans, where each child in the class chose a famous American and dressed up and gave a short presentation to their parents and whoever was having to be there. The students portrayed people such as presidents, astronauts, Pocahontas, Helen Keller, Martin Luther King, Clara Barton, and many, many others. We, as Board Members, don't get the opportunity to get into the classroom and see what's going on and how our curriculum and our programs affect our students, and it was a wonderful opportunity to do that, and I would love to have the opportunity to visit classes and see our programs in action in the future. Second, this is for the Board Members. If, I believe that we've all gotten the revised committee lists, I would hope. So I just want to kind of explain the revision in the committees. The first is negotiations. Mr. Chiarella has requested that he no longer serve as the Chair of the Negotiations Committee but continue to be a member of that team. I did discuss this with Mr. Poy, as Mr. Poy is the new member on our team, and me and Mr. Poy and Mr. Chiarella are the only three. So after the discussion, I've decided that I am going to chair the committee, and both Ken and Doug will remain on the committee as Members of Negotiations. The second is personnel. There was a question brought up as to whether the Jamesburg representative to the Board was allowed to chair any committees after legal concert, consult. It was determined that the Jamesburg Rep can be a member of any of the committees except policy, but he will not be, or he, or the Rep will not be able to chair any committees. Therefore, I had to make changes to that committee. With his knowledge, I removed him as the Chair. He will stay as a Member of Personnel, and I have asked Mr. Poy to take over that position, but the Members of that committee stay the same. There's no new Members on that committee. The third one is policy. Since the Jamesburg representative cannot vote on any Monroe policies, he is not able to be a Member of the Policy Committee. Therefore, the quorum on the Policy Committee is no longer six, it's five. So I had to remove a person from the Policy Committee, and I believe the Policy Committee will now consist of Mr. Braverman as the Chair, Ms. Antellas, Ms. Arminio, and myself. I believe Mr. Presiosso will now serve as the alternate, and the alternate has now been removed. So I don't know if you have any questions. It was a little complicated, and I think we sent home two different versions of the committee lists. So if everything's okay with that, we'll go to other Board of Education business. Is there any Member of the Board who would like to discuss anything? Mr. Chiarella?
I just want to touch on the fact that we had a planning board meeting just on the 27th of last month, and just what we went over and what happened at the planning board meeting. We voted on a request for a minor subdivision of two lots on Old Forge Road, JSM at Monroe, LLC, the sponsor of English Town Road, Melch Mills Road. Presentation will be moved to this 20, the 27th of this month from last month, so it wasn't heard then, it'll be heard on March 27th. The other thing that we voted on was to amend Chapter 108 of the master plan, and what that does is it changes the R-20 and R-80 zones to stop nursing homes and hospitals from being built in R-20 and R-80 zones, and that had to go to council for a first and second reading before those changes take effect in the master plan, but that was it. It was a short agenda.
Thank you. It's nice to have a Member of the Board of Education on the planning board. Anyone else? Ms. Antellas?
A question. I'm going to go back to ethics, and it's E on the Ethics Code, which says, "I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the Board." Could that be interpreted as a Board Member going to a council meeting and saying that they're a Board of Education Member?
Well, I am not a lawyer.
Okay.
But we'd probably have to get a legal opinion on that.
I had sent Ms. Lourde a clip from a council meeting that I'd like to play, if you'll indulge me here. I'm not sure. Just put up some volume. Oops, sorry. I don't know if people can hear this.
Put the mic down. A little more.
I was appointed by the President of the Board of Education or asked to... I was appointed by the President of the Board of Education or asked to be on the Human Relations.
Actually, it starts a little bit.
If we had followed our own rules. And there was no building permits. Putting children in the schools than the 29 houses. So there's a whole. Well, no, it is us. We have to take responsibility. One last thing.
Okay.
I was, I was, I was fortunate enough to be elected on the Board of Education, so I am speaking as a Board member.
Okay. I have a problem with that. I do not believe you are allowed to talk as a Board member there. And I consulted the attorney, and she said the same thing. So you are in violations of the Ethics Act.
Ms. Arminio?
May I respond? Okay. I thank you for your attention to this detail. I have, I go, just so the public knows, I attend council meetings, I attend many of the township meetings, zoning board, planning board, and I have been vocal for many years, so I have a pattern of speaking up. At that meeting, I specifically spoke first of planning board issues, correct? And then I said, "On a next issue." So I did not speak as a planning board member on those issues, because I know not to do so. But I, it is not something that I just started, or as a Board member, I didn't say it that way. So we can split hairs and try to reinterpret what I said. Afterwards, if you'll notice, I stopped with the planning board questions and comment, and then I said, as a planning board member, all I asked the mayor was, I had not heard from him because he had not, he had not approved of an appointment that you made, President Kalpanowicz, that I was requested to get on the Human Relations Committee. That's all I said as a Board member. It directly impacted me, and I wanted to know if I was going to be on the Human Relations Committee. That's the only reference to being a Board member that I made. I don't see that as a violation. I did not, however, speak about the planning board or any other issues. I hope that my election to this Board does not censor me on issues that I have been concerned about for 15 years. I have been an active and informed member of Monroe Township City Council. I respect the process, and I feel that I could have been informed about this much sooner. I can't believe we're going to our attorney to spend money again on this. It seems like we want to split hairs on every little issue. There was no way I ever made a comment on saying that I was a Board member. If it was misconstrued that way because I didn't take a five-minute recess and then come back and ask the mayor about the appointment to the Human Relations Committee, Commission, I don't think there is any harm to the Board for me asking that question in public. I hope, being a member of, an elected member, that we are not so censored. It doesn't seem very democratic to me. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to state that we've been told for years from that microphone that, and I've seen hair split, and we've been told, you know, every time we seemingly moved in the wrong direction, that we were violating some code, or some rule, or some law, that we were doing all sorts of things that were illegal, and violating ethics and things like that. We have rules for a reason. Those rules have to be followed. Every Board member has to be held to the same standard. We can't pick and choose which rules we're going to follow and when we're going to follow them. And before these, this Board decides to start creating new ethics laws and rules for other Board members, or prior Board members, we should really start looking at the rules that are already on the books and following those to the T. Thank you.
I just have one more comment. And I would just like to say, in 2007, Mrs. Kolopanowicz and I were charged with an ethics violation because we went to a PTA meeting, and this was done by the Park Savers. I believe you were a member of that group. And we were charged ethically because we went to a PTA meeting and talked about this building being built. We appeared before the Ethics Committee. We were found not guilty because Mrs. Kolopanowicz is the Board President and she represents the Board. That is who's supposed to talk. I was only with her by invite.
So my question is, is this a tit-for-tat issue? And I'm afraid that, I, I would be very saddened if that were the case. I think that, looking at the merits of the actual, the difference in the issues, I think there is no merit to the accusation. And however, every Board member may feel free to, you know, fill up another ethics violation report.
To explain what happened, I was on vacation last week. I like to go away once in a while and get away from things. While I was gone, I received one email, probably one phone call. Ms. Antellus did send me an email and the tape of the meeting. Dr. Hamilton, I believe, had forwarded it to Ms. Lourde for her opinion while I was away. If I was, remember correctly, and I'm not going to say it verbatim, you had asked, you had said that you were there as a member of the Board of Education, and I remember Council President asking you if you had the permission to do that, and you said you believed you did. And that, that was the problem. The problem is that.
On the one item, Council President.
Exactly.
On the, on the, on the one item.
Uh, yeah, you know, I.
Which was just about a letter getting, asking me to be on the Human Relations.
And I don't have.
This is really, are we taking the public's, and look, we can go forward with this if you think there's a violation. I would be happy to have it addressed, if you'd like.
No, I believe on.
But I, I really think that we're taking the public's time, and we're not, again, doing the work of, you know, for students and the public. But do as you wish.
No, I, I believe that there was a request from Dr. Hamilton.
I think it's been misinterpreted, and I, I think this is some sort of, I refrain from, from saying it.
No, I just, let me finish. There was a request from Dr. Hamilton, Mr. Gorsky, and myself to meet with you this afternoon so that we could discuss this, because I didn't want this to come to this meeting. And, and you had said that you didn't feel like you needed to discuss anything. I, I believe that was your email, that you were not going to meet with us because you didn't have any questions about this.
I have no problem that this is in public. In fact, I prefer that it's in public. I just don't think we should take, continue to take the public's time for it. So I, I think the public should be aware of these, this type of behavior that's going on. I appreciate it.
But according to our attorney, you committed an ethics violation. I, I am not, the Board has not asked to have any ethics charges against you filed, and I'm not planning to do that, but with Mr.
And I, if, I would appreciate that, that in writing and, and the invoice that goes along with that, please.
The invoice to what?
To, to having it in writing. I mean, if you're telling me that you've consulted with the attorney, you've already charged the Board funds for that, correct?
Well, not necessarily. It could be under.
Well, she gave you an opinion. Doesn't she charge for her opinion on the.
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, if, I, I concede to.
Do you want to explain how the, the attorney? Yes. That it could come under the retainer. That was the word I was thinking of.
Well, will it come under the retainer or not?
Depends how many cumulative hours have been consumed this month. I don't know.
Okay.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I just want to address the part about Board members being stifled or censored from speaking out in public or going to meetings and speaking out. That's not the case. Mr. Klein, when he was a Board member, attended every meeting. I would see him at everything. And he would always preface everything that he said by saying, "I'm speaking as a Monroe citizen, not as a Board member." And then he would give his, his opinion, or, you know, talk about whatever he's going to talk about. And so there's no, there's, the Board isn't censored. The Board just has to, the Board, Board members can't speak for the Board if you're not the Board President, or if the Board President hasn't delegated the Vice President to speak for the Board. We vote for a President and a Vice President for a reason, and that's why we have those rules.
Ms. Arminio?
I was speaking for myself regarding the letter that had my name on it to the council and asking to be on the committee. I thought it was a rather benign question. Prior to that, I did not speak about, as a Board member, if I didn't, if I didn't specifically and accurately convey that position, then I will know better in the future. But I believe that I should be able to speak on issues as a, I have a pattern of attending these meetings and speaking out. I have never before said that I was, I was speaking for anybody else other than myself in the past. So I, it's consistent with my behavior. I asked specifically about one letter pertaining to me as a Board member, and I got an answer from the mayor. I, I don't understand how that's a violation. But again, if you need to go through the process, go ahead.
Well, this is as, as a new Board member, as an older Board member, we learn all the time. And sometimes it's the way you word things, sometimes it's how you say things, and this is just one of those, we just wanted to let you know that there might be a better way of addressing that without saying that you are, you are speaking as a Board member, or I don't, I would have to go back and look at the tape, because I don't recall the exact wording.
So what you're saying is, I couldn't ask the, the mayor, who was very jovial about it, and there was quite a nice exchange, if you really look at it.
I did.
About the appointment, a specific one-issue appointment to a commission that I have not been able to attend as a member. So I was asking for clarification. That's all. But I thank every, for everybody's attention.
Madam President, I, I know Ms. Arminio has, has said we shouldn't be wasting the public's time, but I had heard that there was some possible misconduct at, at the Town Council meeting by Ms. Arminio. So I decided to watch Channel 28 and see for myself. And I watched it, and essentially what Ms. Arminio reported there, I believe is accurate. She did ask some questions about the planning board, and then following that, she did make a statement that she was a member of the Board of Education. And I don't recall the exact words, but I know my impression from what she said was, she was trying to get clarification as to when she could attend the meeting of the Human Relations Commission. And she said that she had possibly been appointed. Now, I do recall seeing her name on a list of all the appointments that you make, and she was listed as being appointed to the Human Relations Commission. So it made perfect sense to me that she would possibly appear and say, "When can I attend this meeting?" Or "Why haven't I been contacted?", something of that nature. I happened to have seen the President of the Council over the weekend, and I, I said to him, I said, "Can you shed some light on what took place there regarding that?" And he said, "I think she was just a little confused." That was what he told me. And I says, "Well, what do you mean?" And he says, "The Board cannot appoint someone to the Human Relations Commission," which I found interesting. He says, I said, "Well, then how do they get appointed?" And he says, "The mayor appoints them, and he appoints them on the basis of ethnicity." That's exactly what he told me, that they're appointed on the basis of ethnicity, and I think that was even mentioned that particular night, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm simply sharing that information because I did watch the video. I didn't see anything inappropriate in terms of, of Ms. Arminio trying to be a spokesperson for the Board. I think she mentioned that she was on the Board, and she was trying to get clarification about this Human Relations Commission. Clearly, it seemed to me that there was some confusion from the remarks that I heard on that video. That's why I then spoke to Mr., and I haven't spoke to Ms. Arminio at all about this. That's why then I spoke to Mr. Tambura when I saw him on Sunday, and that's what he told me. So for whatever it's worth, I share that with the full Board. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Nostine?
I didn't see the tape, but I was actually at the meeting, and I did hear Ms. Arminio say, "I'm speaking as a Board member." And I thought it was quite appropriate that she was speaking as a Board member, because she was asking about Board business, basically a letter that you had sent to her, appointing her.
Exactly.
As the Human Rights Commission, to the Human Rights Relations Commission. So, I, she absolutely said it, and I would have said the same thing, because at that moment in time, she was speaking as a Board member, requesting to know why she was not allowed to be on this commission, even though she was appointed by our Board President. To me, it's pretty straightforward, and I see that as not being a violation. So, maybe we do need to take this further, because if there's members here that see it as a violation, I don't, obviously Ms. Arminio doesn't, and if, so we obviously need to get a ruling on it, because if you're speaking.
We did get, we did get a ruling on it. Our attorney said it was a violation.
We need to get another ruling. Our attorney isn't always right. An opinion is opinion.
Well, why would we, why would we go to get another?
Well, you guys are ready for ethics charges. I'm talking, I'm talking.
It's like saying that we don't trust the DA, let's get another ruling over him or the superintendent.
How are we going to hear this? You're talking over me. Basically, the bottom line is, like you always say, it's just an opinion. So let's get, again, a free, a free one from the school board.
We're not going anywhere with this.
I'm sorry?
We're not going anywhere.
Well, we need to know for the future. How else could Ms. Arminio have addressed the council with a Board issue? Because it really was a Board issue.
She cannot say that she's speaking as a Board member.
But she was.
But she cannot say that, because it's like, like saying, "I am speaking for the Board." It's the same thing. As a Board member, there are people who would believe that she is speaking for the Board.
Well, she was. She was speaking your voice, because she had your letter appointing her.
Well, then the appropriate thing would be for her to ask Mrs. Kolopanowicz, to ask the mayor, "Why aren't you making the appointment instead of her, or any of this other Board going rogue and doing whatever we want, and showing up wherever and saying, 'I'm a Board member.'" That's not appropriate. We have rules. So she should have went to Mrs. Kolopanowicz and said, "I have not yet been appointed. Can you please find out for me?"
Okay.
For years, we had been asking for somebody on the planning board. Nobody here showed up at Board, at council meetings saying, "Hey, I'm a Board member. How come you don't appoint me to the council, to the planning board?" Because we do it through the Board President. That's our policy.
And, and I agree. We had the letter, so that's why we thought we had, I guess she thought she had the power of the Board President with that letter.
No, nobody does have that ability, just like nobody can speak to the media except for the Board President. That's policy. Michelle?
Yes, okay. The intent of the question.
Sorry.
Was that in advance, the, there was a new meeting scheduled prior to another meeting with the Township Council. I thought they had, would have to approve me at the council meeting. So I was asking why there might not be a resolution. So I don't think it was a rogue issue, and I, you know, I, I also think, maybe we do need a ruling, because I think in the future, as a member of this community, I may say that, disclose that while I'm a Board member, because I think sometimes people should know that while they're a council member, while they work for the, for the Township, I think that impacts on people's positions. And as a disclosure, as a transparent disclosure, that I am an elected official Board member, but I will not be speaking as such. And I did not speak as such prior to my asking about the letter, which, again, I think is a benign issue.
Okay. Anyone else?
One last thing.
Oh, Mr. Kaufman?
Just, just as an aside, in the past, I've gone to a couple of committee meetings for the Township when I've been, when I was on the Board for a while. So I knew that people knew who I was, and they kind of would infer certain things. And use it, don't use it, it's up to you. When I got in front of the mic, I made sure of two things. I announced my name. I disclosed the fact that I was an active member of the Board of Education, but I was there representing myself. And by no means, anything that I say would be affiliated or associated to the Board of Education. Because, to your point, when, when you do this gig for a while, when you go to these other committees, they want you on, because you're representing something, some stuff that's going on here, that you're bringing that footprint, if you will, like you're doing Ken, to that particular committee. But you have to make sure that you just do that disclosure of saying, "Look, I know you know who I am," or maybe my head's too big for myself, "but I'm, I am a Board member of the Edu, Board of Education member, but I'm here representing myself and speaking only for myself."
Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I just want to mention the, the committees. So if we have district committees, you're, we, you have the, you have the right, obviously, to put any of us on those committees and, and to list that. When it comes to the Township, though, that's a separate entity. So we could make recommendations, or we could ask, or we could ask for, for a liaison position, but really, the recommendation or the, or the, the person who really makes the decision is the mayor, based upon what he thinks or who he thinks will fit in, in those various committees, because it's all part of his administration. So I just want to get that straight, because just some, just because we recommend at the Board level that someone's a liaison, doesn't automatically mean that they've been appointed to a Township Board position.
Okay. Well, Ms. Antellus?
Perhaps we should utilize New Jersey school boards and maybe have a couple of sessions for our new members where they can ask the questions before they go ahead and maybe do an action like this. Is it okay if I say this in public?
It doesn't hurt. Training never hurts. So we'll consider to have board training on governance and have the opportunity to ask any questions that need to be asked. Any other board business? Mr. Poy?
This is what happens when you miss a couple of board meetings. As I mentioned earlier, my wife and I were away during the month of February. I did watch the videotape of the meeting on February the 10th. And I wish to let the public, as well as my fellow board members, know that I take exception to the remarks that were made by a member of our public who spoke during the public session. A vote had been taken in January, when I was present, regarding a recommendation by the superintendent to offer someone a permanent position in the school system. In that the board had been discussing changes to its nepotism policy, I expressed my opinion that the recommendation was premature. I felt that the decision to hire should have occurred once the board had decided whether to make changes to the policy or not. During the public session on February the 10th, the member of the public, whose spouse had been recommended, made a remark that those who had voted against the recommendation did not act in the best interest of the children of our schools. In that I have devoted over 40 years of my adult life to teaching and being an administrator in a public school, I found the speaker's remark offensive. In that I ran for this board and devote numerous hours each week to being as informed as I can be on matters of concern to this board, I found this remark to be offensive. Additionally, I have four grandchildren who attend the schools in Monroe, and I am very interested in the quality of their education. I have lived in this community for 45 years, and I care about the quality of our schools. I always have. Simply because I felt that the vote should have been delayed is not cause for anyone to accuse me of not acting in the best interest of the children of our schools. Since I was not here, I could not make that comment at the time, and I wanted to make it tonight. On a more positive note, there's a couple of things that I, that happened during my absence that I want to mention. Some of these were mentioned by our student rep, Cory Hader, earlier this evening. Some were not. I'm very pleased to know that our district supervisors are making such a concerted effort to help our teachers prepare our students for the new PARC test, which will be required in 2015. From what I read in the newspapers, PARC and the Common Core standards have created quite a controversy in some states and communities. It is good to know that in our district, we are accepting the mandated curricular changes and are doing our best to prepare our students. Now that the winter sports season has ended, I want to thank all the students and their coaches who participated. It requires a huge commitment of time and effort to participate in interscholastic sports. Special commendation to those teams who had winning seasons, boys' bowling, girls' basketball, wrestling, and cheerleading. And a special shout out to our wrestlers and their coaches for their historic season. It was great to hear that students in our Falcon Life program qualified for the state Special Olympics bowling tournament. Additionally, congratulations to the students in the DECA program. I understand that the Monroe Club had a significant number of students qualify for the state finals, and that three of them qualified for the international competition, which will be occurring in Atlanta. And finally, I want to commend our central administration and our building and ground staff for managing the unusual number of snowstorms that occurred in February. It was good to know that our students were not put in harm's way and that none of our buildings suffered major damage. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Kaufman?
Just to make this quick, I just want to say I was very fortunate enough to attend the Monroe Township Middle School Play on Friday night. I believe we paid the orchestration tonight for that. There's a lot of talent out there. It was very entertaining. The students were great. And I just want to thank the staff and all the, all the people that were responsible for putting that show on. They did a fantastic job. And I highly recommend any other shows in the future. It's a very cheap night out.
As good as Broadway. Anyone else? Mr. Zarneski?
Two weeks ago, I attended, along with Dr. Gorman, several guidance counselors to the Middlesex County Student Achievement. And we had two outstanding students from this district receive awards in that aspect. There was also two students from each high school in Middlesex County that achieved high honors and high praises for their work, not only in the schools, but outside the schools. And I want to take my time. Unfortunately, I forget their names right now. If Dr. Gorman can help me out with that. And sorry to put you on the spot.
Has and Sophia. Has that first name?
Yes. First names. That's good.
That's good.
And I want to congratulate them and every other student that received awards and achievements for that evening. Also attended the Somerset County School Board's meeting last Wednesday, and they had some people there speaking on special education and what's going on in the state regarding that. And I would also like to add that this Wednesday, Mercer County down in Ewing is holding an ethics course, I guess, for lack of words, which is basically what we're going through here. So it's never too late to attend the Middlesex County School Board meeting. If the cutoff is given and you don't get to sign up, you can always show up. There's always two or three seats for walk-ins to attend. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Presiosso?
I'd like to thank the Monroe Education Foundation for sponsoring this program here for Mike Nichols. I went to see this young man, and I was blown away to see how, the hardship that he has to go through and his family. And I didn't know what to do. I had to leave. I just couldn't stay there. But I recognized the father as somebody who's helped kids for a long time on the baseball committee for the, in the recreation department for Monroe. And I know him quite well. I felt so bad for this boy. I wanted to try to do something for the family. I was talking to Mike Liebowitz, councilman for Monroe, and he had mentioned to me that he went out to dinner. And he had mentioned to one of the managers, this young man that needed some help. And he told me the restaurant that it was, and I decided to go there. And it happened to be Red Lobster on Route 9. And talking to them, I have a possibility of holding a Mike Nichols Day, where they would contribute a certain amount of their checks for everybody that walked in there with a voucher that they were going to print out. We're in the process of starting something. From that restaurant, I figured I might as well go to all of them. I went to four or five other restaurants, talking to the managers, and they're getting in touch with the owners. And we're trying to get together one day where we have a Mike Nichols fundraising day in the restaurants. And I would ask the PTAs and PTOs and even the teachers that if they want to get involved, I would appreciate that because if they do have printouts for vouchers, I would like you to give them out, if possible. And I would also like to ask for motion if the administration could see if they could make a Mike Nichols Day in the school and possibly work something out with raising funds. I know there's plenty of people that need help, but this was something that this boy was at a sporting event for the school. And after seeing this boy, all we could do is try to help. Any, any little bit would help. The family's hard pressed. And I would like to make the motion if the administration would allow us to investigate to see how we could maybe coordinate with these restaurants that I'm working with, make one particular day for fundraiser.
We can designate a Mike Nichols Day, but before the board introduces a resolution on fundraising, I'd like to get some more particulars about what you have in mind. So if you would like, perhaps we could sit down and kind of draft, draft a proposal together, what it'd look like. Just an outline. And then at the next meeting, present that to the board.
Okay, well-
Because we have another meeting this month.
I went to these restaurants, and I was a parent when I went. I didn't represent the board. Everybody hear that. Okay? And what I did was, I worked something out with them with that if they do do the vouchers, they wanted some kind of assurance from you that this is really happening and where we could deposit these funds. So I would have to work with you. And if you would want to set up a date, and I would love to see if we could do some kind of Mike Nichols Day.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I'm the liaison to the, to the rec board. And Joe Isola, from what I understand, is, I think he's running the foundation for Mikey Nichols. I think one of the issues that they were having was that they were trying to corral all the various entities that were popping up, that were raising money or doing fundraising for Mikey, in order to get them funneled into that one group so that there aren't a bunch of different entities. And then they can't control where the money's going, what's happening with the money, or if there's anything going on. I think it's what your, your point is well placed, and I think it's a good thing. But I, but I think that that's probably the way to go also, is to go through Joe Isola.
Yeah, I think it's pray for Mikey 23. I know there's a few websites that's online on Facebook, I think. You would be amazed at the number of organizations and people who are doing fundraisers for this child. And the family is just phenomenal, phenomenal. There's-
Whenever you're ready, if you want to get together, I have a list of restaurants that want to talk to you, so.
Okay. Sounds good.
It is a good idea, but I'm going to tell you, years ago, we had a young man who was a basketball player, and he was seriously ill. And he passed. And we were asked to name the gym over at the middle school for him, which was a great thing to do. And we did it. Unfortunately, what happened was other parents came to us, and they were very hurt by it because their child had had an illness, and they weren't recognized. So you really have to be careful because if you do for one, you're going to end up hurting somebody else. So just think about it very carefully before you go ahead and do a full day for him. I think there's a lot of people out there doing many, many fundraisers.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll go to closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects. We will not be discussing the Jamesburg Rep nonparticipation in closed session as we have no legal counsel tonight, but we will have personnel matters for employee number 003060 and 002044, and harassment, intimidation, intimidation and bullying incidents, incidents 29 through 33. The discussion-
Thirty-two.
I added one. Thirty-two. The discussion conducted in closed session can be discussed, disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Is there a motion? Mr. Zarneski, is there a second? Ms. Arminio, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? At this time, the board will move into closed session.
It's understandable.
Oh, about 30 minutes.
Oh, wow.
At this time, the board will reconvene into public session. And I believe Dr. Hamilton has a couple of resolutions to read.
Yes. Under Board Action Item to be entered in the record is Letter L. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the suspension with pay of employee number 003060, retroactive to the period from March 10th through March 13th, and a return to work on March 14th. The Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrative Board Secretary hereby are authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the board.
Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Zarneski, comments or questions? We will have a roll call.
Ms. Antelis?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella? Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Presiosso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolopanowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Item L passes.
Thank you.
Board Action Item to be entered in the record is Letter M. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the suspension with pay of employee number 002044, retroactive to March 14th, 2014.
Motion?
No.
Oh, you're not finished?
I need to, need to correct that. It is recommended-
Oh, I thought you were finished. I'm sorry.
-that the Board of Education approve the suspension with pay of employee number 002044, effective March 17th, 2014, pending further action of the board. The Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrative Board Secretary hereby authorize and direct to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the board.
All right, second. Mr. Kaufman and Ms. Arminio, any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Antelis?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Presiosso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolopanowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Item M passes.
Thank you.
All right, no further action.
Okay, then we will go to the public forum. Again, anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone and give your name and address for the record. And we will continue to adhere to our three-minute limit.
Mark Klein, Seven Crenshaw. First of all, we as residents do not get a report as to the student violations. Only you people do, rightly so. If you are getting the lists as long as what I got when I was on the board, then the code of conduct that the school system has been using all this year, all these years, is not working. Because you'll notice a lot of violations repeatedly for the same students, for the same thing. Okay? So while I was on the board, I took it upon myself to draw up stiffer penalties and penalties for other things, that I made a suggestion to the board, and it just died. Nothing ever happened. So that's just to give you some feedback on that. Now, I just want to get an understanding, Madam President. Based on what was discussed tonight, it seems that if something is said by a board member after the meeting, in other words, it's got nothing to do with the meeting, that it's an ethics violation. Is that correct?
Possibility.
Okay.
Possible.
If you remember, I brought up something to you, something that happened on the outside. I was a resident, and it was done by a board member. And I was told, because it happened on the outside, I don't have a leg to stand on, that this person can say whatever they want, and I don't have a leg to stand on, even though they're a board member. You also remember that there were, if I wanted to bring up ethics charges, I was told it would take two years for it to be heard by the Ethics Board, and I was told, couldn't do anything. So I don't understand what the policy is. And then that listing of 10 code of conducts that the board is supposed to follow, and it was brought up by Ms. Antelis, well, one of the items that she read off was, you are not to attack another board member in public. Well, she broke the violate, she violated the code by attacking Ms. Antelis. So I don't understand, not Antelis, Ms. Arminio, I don't understand what you're allowed to do, what you're not allowed to do. I know I, as a board member, and even a past board member, I am not allowed to bring up anything that happened in closed session. So I can't say a word. I don't do a thing. But if somebody is going to quote ethics, that person should live up to all the ethics that she throws in front of everybody else. So please, there's got to be an understanding here somewhere. We all have to understand what's a violation and what's not.
I'll respond to that. I got a specific request from a member of the public in regard to the situation with Mr. Presiosso. With that, I had to act on it.
I'm not talking about that.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought that was-
No, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about myself. I'm talking about things that transpired the past few years. That's all I'm bringing up. I just don't understand what you're allowed to do, and what you're not allowed to do, and what is an ethics violation, and what's not an ethics violation. It seems that it's one way. That's the only reason why I brought it up. I'm not mentioning names, okay? You know what I'm talking about.
And I thank you for your comments.
Period. Thank you.
Steven Ryback, 23, Riviera Drive. In light of discussions that, you know, we've been listening to tonight, I'd just like to underscore and compliment Mr. Zarneski, Mr. Chiarella as well, for bringing up the workshops that you suggest many of the board members might attend. I think after tonight, it might be very appropriate for board members here to attend, whether it be sensitivity training- it be sensitivity training, or whether it be ethics, code of ethics, and how board members should respond, what's appropriate as far as responses. And when we're talking responses, you know, occasionally, all of us say things that we don't mean, or act in a manner that we normally won't act in. But when you're in a board situation like this, it's very important to be aware of what you can and cannot do. And Madam President, with all due respect, it's up to you to make sure that happens. Occasionally, I hear or see comments made or actions that seem inappropriate, and I don't see any retort from you toward that board member. I think all of them have to know what you expect from your Board of Education, and that you will not bend from that. And I would expect you to stop any kind of a comment or something that you deem inappropriate so that we don't get this blown out of proportion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Bob Zaglarsky, 162 Tournament Drive. At last month's Board of Education meeting, Dr. Hamilton mentioned that he would be discussing with the Township Council my idea for surconnection fees for classrooms, and I was wondering if he had an opportunity, and I realized you've been a little busy.
We have reached out to council to set that meeting up, to have that conversation. We're also getting a little legal research so we find out what our position ought to be when we have that meeting. So we have taken some initial steps.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'd just like to say, as a person who sat through twenty years of Board of Education meetings as a Board Secretary, I feel the pain of the staff members here, and I hope that you'll be able to go to work tomorrow morning and somehow work effectively in the day-to-day operations of the school district. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Joe Homoki, 61 Hoffman Road. It was very nice to see how the school budget brought the entire board together, all on the same wavelength. And three hours and fifteen minutes later, I'm not too sure if that will continue. But anyway, board members have to attend New Jersey School Boards Association workshops. I attended a number of them, and so have most of you. Sometimes we forget to ask the most simple questions as to what we can do, what we can't do as board members. My suggestion is that either the Board President, the attorney, or the superintendent, sit down with new board members and just talk about how to act in the community. Not that they don't know how to act, but there are certain ways of talking about certain things at public meetings especially. And I think that would be a very good suggestion for all new members that come in, that you, Kathy, or anybody else, sit down with them, Tom, look, you certainly can go to public meetings, but make sure you don't talk for the board. You only talk for yourself, and identify yourself as such. And I think that would go a long way. It's not fair for new board members to allow them to sink or swim. And I'm sure there was no intent at all to hurt anybody or to speak for the board. It just came out that way. So my suggestion is that sit down with the people, talk about things. If any new members coming in, please do the same thing. Educate them locally. Thank you.
The Superintendent, Mr. Gorski, and myself always sit down with new board members, but maybe we have to add that piece to the conversation.
Maybe you can come up with a set of standard questions that you repeat to new board members so that you don't have to reinvent the wheel every time. But I think that would go a long way.
Okay.
Ira Tesar, 11 Elliott Drive. I just actually want to make a quick apology for, I guess, some of my statements in the board meeting if I offended Mr. Poy. Maybe I was a little too harsh on those statements back on, I guess it was February 10th. So just apologizing for those statements, and I'll think of them a little more carefully in the future. Thank you. Also, I'd like to congratulate the Microsoft... Microsoft. It's getting a little late. The Monroe Township High School Cheerleader Competition Team, they won the state championship the beginning of March. I just didn't hear that mentioned in there. And yes, my daughter's on the team, that's how I know, but I just wanted some good news I wanted to share. It's the first time, I think, they won a state championship in like six or seven years.
Jody Desai, 2 Northwind Court. It's my understanding that there's a committee that's gathering regarding the TAG program. I was wondering if there's anything you can share with us on the progress of that, and if during that discussion, if there's any progress of moving the TAG program into the daily routine of students.
Dr. Gorman?
Thought you would be able to say anything about TAG, didn't you? We made our initial recommendations to the Curriculum Committee today. We had a lengthy discussion on it without giving you any of those details. If you want to come and shoot me an email or set up an appointment, I'd be happy to talk with you about what our vision is and how we envision ourselves getting there, without going into the details until the board and the Curriculum Committee approves us and gives us our direction. But I would be happy to go into detail. And yes, we are looking at different models and integrated approach to meet the needs of all of our kids.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else from the public?
Nelson Chen, 4 Ashley Court. I was going through the flyer the other day, and I came across this advertisement. Can anyone shed some light on this? I don't know what it is or what the purpose of it is. It's clearly from the Monroe school system.
I don't... Can you... You could share.
Or make an airplane.
Security!
Is that from the other Monroe school?
No, this is us. This is our... We did a trifold brochure. Actually, I didn't know it was in here. We did a trifold brochure, which was just our opportunity to kind of highlight some of the things that have been accomplished over the last couple of years. And this only looks like a part of it, actually, was printed.
How much did that cost us?
Nothing.
Oh, was free advertising?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we did.
The only other thing I want to comment on is, and I'm not weighing in on what Mr. Presiosso said, what he didn't say, what he did, how Mr. Tesla felt about it, but what I would like to say is that... ...was made, and everyone spoke eloquently. And I would just want to say that if the outcome of it, and only you folks know because you've spoken to the attorney, if the outcome of it is that he gets a slap on the wrist and he doesn't end up off the board, then I think you're kind of chasing something that really shouldn't be chased, in my opinion. Because he's been dragged through the mud enough. This would only just prolong that dragging through the mud. And as you can see, it's creating a lot of divisiveness in the board, especially with you, Madam President. You should be looking to unify the board and not looking to pick sides on it. And it should be a unified front with the board, but people are videotaping, giving out videotapes, and who said what, and who meant what, and all board members are coming up. I really think that the board should really work together, and you're spending a whole hell of a lot of time on what Ms. Arminio said, what Mr. Presiosso said, when really you're here for the kids. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mary Lester, 44 Avenue, I. You seem concerned about the conduct on the board and violating the confidence of the public. At the March 2013 Board of Ed meeting, there was a loud verbal brawl between Mr. Klein and the Superintendent, Mr. Hamilton, which included Mr. Hamilton saying, quote, "Bring it on." This went viral on YouTube and humiliated our school district. Other than an apology from Mr. Hamilton and the board giving him an optional 1.5% raise, how was he held accountable for his actions?
Thank you for your comments.
You're not going to answer the question?
I just did. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close public forum. Our next scheduled Board of Education meeting, Wednesday, April 9th, 2014, 7 o'clock PM at the Monroe Township High School. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Kaufman?
No, he gave it to me.
Mr. Zarneski, Mr. Kaufman, all in favor? Opposed? Needing adjourned.
That was a great picture.